Welcome to the committee of the whole meeting of the Cape Coral City Council. Today is July 19th, 2023. This meeting now comes to order. Please stand for pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Dunter?
Here.
Council members, Carson?
Here.
Cummings?
Here.
Hayden?
Here.
Long?
Here.
Shepherd?
Here.
Steinki?
Here.
Welsh?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Item four is business. Four A is citizens input time. Citizens input is a maximum of 60 minutes, three minutes per individual. Please remember to state your name. We'll be on matters concerning city government. We'll be utilizing the podium to my left, your right. If you wish to participate in citizens input, please come forward.
Hi.
Good morning.
Good morning. Alrighty. My name is Chelsea Hayes.
Make sure you kind of speak closely.
My name is Chelsea Hayes, and I am representing Sunset Jet Ski Rental and Tours. Good morning, council members. After Monday's meeting with Parks and Rec, I think it's fair to say we're all concerned. While I understand the city's hesitation and the legality of the matter, I also understand that each one of these businesses have invested hundreds of thousands of dollars into something that supports their families, something each and every one of us can be proud of. The sales tax revenue alone quite benefit, is quite beneficial to not only the city, but the great state of Florida. Cape Coral is a good city and a great place to call home, but let's face it, the city doesn't have a lot of the things other cities do. Almost anything that is fun or exciting, we have to either cross over the bridge or take I-75 north or south. I think it's fair to say our city needs water sports companies like ours to drive tourism. I understand the program has been misused and mismanaged, but we have made tremendous changes in order to save this program. The term franchise was brought up on Monday's meeting, but we work as a team with our skis. Losing one of us would be like losing a foot. We operate as a conglomerate. That's what keeps us whole. Also, bidding for a spot, what exactly does that entail? Our own parking spaces? Our own designated dock specifically for us? If the cost is going to raise exponentially, we should get what we pay for. I know I speak for everyone when I say we have done everything right to the best of our abilities. We are properly licensed, insured, and our orientation process is the best around. I say that to say this, so many people are operating illegally, and let's be honest, it's not going to stop anytime soon. And with, with increased population and fewer launch areas due to the hurricane in Lee County, every weekend becomes a struggle. We don't mind proper oversight, but we strongly encourage the council to take your time and really consider the gravity of this situation and the decision. Our livelihood and our families depend on it. God bless you, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak during citizens input?
Good morning. Jason Pym, District One. First reason I'm here is to follow up on the issue of Ian debris removal along our canals. The Friends of Wildlife first brought this in front of the Waterway Advisory Board and City Council back in January and many other meetings. They were very concerned about ripping up habitat and displacing wildlife, as well as the erosion and water quality impacts. After meeting with public work staff in the spring, quite a bit of publicly owned parcels were identified. We have this excellent map. And subsequently, the Waterway Advisory Board voted unanimously to recommend to council establish shoreline erosion and habitat restoration demo sites on some publicly owned parcels that were cleared as a result of Ian damage, along with a request to add the matter to a council agenda as soon as possible. So today's presentation on the GO bond, I think identifies several public parks that would be ideal for projects of this type. Seemingly, they're still in the planning phase, including the edge of Festival Park along Gator Slue Canal. That would be an ideal freshwater site. Tropicana and/or Crystal Lake would be a potential brackish water living shoreline project. So I'm here to suggest that you ask staff to include native shoreline plantings and educational elements about their benefits for water quality and wildlife habitat. The staff slides indicate we're in the process of evaluating landscaping decisions right now. So if the GO bond budgets can't cover that, it's my understanding there are potential grants from NRCS and other sources that could be applied. So please help restore just a little bit of the wild, natural resources that we lost in the storm, and we can also improve on the city's public education and communication, which we talk about all the time in relation to water quality and other issues. Secondly, Redfish Point, Piney Point, whatever you want to call it today, I realize there's nothing immediate in front of you concerning that proposed development, but there were hundreds of residents at Rotary Park in opposition to this possible land use change on Saturday, including Commissioner Ruane, and he stated to the crowd very clearly that he favors preserving the entire area, and the citizens would very much value similar support from each of you to keep the current land use as preserved and aid in the conservation acquisition to prevent the further degradation of wildlife habitat, our water quality, and our storm resilience in the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Juan Carlos, and I'm here with the jet ski rental guys, myself, owner of Sunspire Jet Ski Rentals. I'd like to thank you guys for the opportunity given to us here today, and I want to discuss a few crucial points that can lead to improvements in our consistent problems at the boat ramps where we conduct our business. Cape Coral has an estimated permanent population of 201,000 residents, the most populated city in southwest Florida, growing at a rate of nearly 7% per year, making it the fourth fastest growing city in the United States among cities with populations of more than 100,000, according to the U.S. Census. According to the city of Cape Coral Fiscal Year 2022 to 2024 adopted budget article, it says that the mission for parks and recreation is to, quote, "provide premier parks and programs for individuals of various ages, skill levels, interests, social needs, and economic capabilities that collectively enhance the overall quality of life within the city of Cape Coral," end quote. I believe that is exactly what small business like ours bring to our people. On the same article, it states that the following key investments for parks and neighborhood: $1 million for median enhancements within utility extension programs, $1.3 million for community beautification and median improvements, 26 additional positions within the Parks and Recreation Department to operate and maintain new parks constructed under the Parks' general obligation bonds, $1.5 million grant match for JC Park shoreline improvements, $260,000 for the construction of the Bimini Basin mooring field, $1.9 million for Parks Recreation Facility repairs and improvements include air conditioning replacement, roof replacement, and addressing deferred maintenance needs. $800,000 towards replacing golf cart paths and other improvements at the Coral Oaks Golf Course. With this fast-growing city and no key investments designated to build more boat ramps, parking spaces, and bigger docks to accommodate the current demand of boaters and growth in population, it is expected for these problems to appear. The current problem will only be solved with more public boat ramps and parking spaces. Otherwise, there'll only be a change of problems, but never a solution. We are not the problem, and getting rid of us is not the solution based on the facts stated above. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak during citizens input? Please come forward.
Hello, good morning. My name's Charles Myers, and I come before you today as a representative of the jet ski and boat rental businesses in our area. The Parks and Recreation Department is recommending a franchise for the boat and jet ski rental businesses to a local multimillion-dollar corporation. The proposal to introduce franchising raises significant concerns for our local businesses. It risks undermining the hard work and investments we've made to establish ourselves in Cape Coral. Allowing one wealthy company to monopolize the industry would not only displace businesses like ours, but also diminish the character that we provide. We urge the city council to consider alternative solutions that preserve the integrity of our local businesses. I understand the city has received complaints in the aftermath of Hurricane Ian, and I just want to assure you that the local jet ski rental businesses have been working tirelessly to address these concerns. The truth is, the complaints aren't stemming from the jet ski rental businesses. It's evident that the closure of the other boat ramps from the hurricane have enforced a flux of residents to our boat ramps. As a result, these complaints are not a reflection of our business operations. Franchising to a multimillion-dollar corporation would not only displace us, but it would also strip Cape Coral of its unique charm. Our businesses are more than just commercial ventures. We're deeply invested in the city's success and growth. I urge the city council to reconsider the recommendation and work together with us, the local business owners, to find a solution that benefits everyone involved. Let us continue working hand in hand and address any concerns, maintain the integrity of our community, and preserve the livelihoods of our employees. Let us collaborate to build a stronger, more vibrant Cape Coral. We're committed to working hard with the city and our fellow residents to ensure a prosperous future for everyone, and with that, I think we can protect the essence of Cape Coral and foster an environment where local businesses can thrive. So guys, I just want you to reconsider, you know, the franchising of a, of a business. We've worked so hard here for the past three years to, to build our businesses. Yes, excuse me, I'm kind of choked up up here. Worked so hard to get this business going, and a franchise to come in and take us all away would just be devastating. So I'd just like to urge you to reconsider that and just kind of let us work hand in hand. We've done everything we can the past few months to try and work through these complaints, and I'm hoping you guys might be able to just kind of reconsider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak during citizens input?
Good morning. My name is Mark Casimir. I'm the owner of Tropical Wave Runners Jet Ski Rentals. I just want to say thank you for giving us the opportunity to address our concerns today. As a representative of the boat and jet ski rental businesses here in Cape Coral, we stand here before you united not just as entrepreneurs, but as close-knit community that has poured our heart, souls, and lifesavings into our businesses. Since our last meeting, we have taken concerns to heart and have made significant efforts to find a compromise. Each of us has reduced our fleets from, from more than four jet skis to only four vessels, down to a maximum of four. Moreover, we have coordinated our schedule so that we are never more than four boats docked at any given time at the boat ramp. Additionally, we have implemented, implemented a streamlined orientation process, ensuring that our customers are ready to depart within 15 minutes. We have made these adjustments to alleviate any potential congestion or inconvenience at the boat ramps. We recently had a meeting with Parks and Recreation Department, and one of the suggestions arose was possibility to franchise our businesses. While we appreciate the consideration, we have concerns about this approach, a bidding process, if a bidding process were to be implemented, it is highly likely that an entity with deeper pockets would prevail, jeopardizing the livelihoods of more than 40 families who rely on this business. Our investments, our depths, and our dreams would be reduced to nothing. If anyone go out at any activity and read our reviews, they will see that we have the best reviews in southwest Florida. This achievement is a testament to the exceptional experiences we provided to our customers. It demonstrates that people not only appreciate, but truly love, the way we operate and that we create cherished memories when they choose to embark on adventures with us in the free and vacation time in the great city of Cape Coral. In closing, we humbly request that the respected council members to allow us to continue operating our businesses from the boat ramps. We do not seek a large area, but rather a small spot where increased oversight. Thank you for your attention, and we hope that you will consider our plea with empathy and understanding. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning. My name is Howard Campbell. I represent Leisure Time Boat Rentals here in Cape Coral. I want to thank, thank you for the opportunity to speak on a few of the options that we have here. Cape Coral, as everybody has already said, is an extremely fast-growing city. It's a great place to vacation to. I believe all our companies cause vacationers to want to come here. A bigger part that I would like to bring up is 20% of our renters for our company are actually residents, current residents. They use us all the time. It's much easier to rent a boat than it is to own a boat. The three options that Parks and Rec has, are going to go over today are all three viable options. I would like to be able to go with option three with a little more oversight on the current permit program that we actually have and do our due diligence on enforcing the actual permit that we actually have in place right now. Also, to modify the current permit to where it is a little better for the city, a little better for us. Couple examples: go to annual fee increases, maybe per boat fees instead of a yearly fee. Also, limit a company to only one park. That way, companies can't go to multiple parks in any, any single day or any other day. That way, Parks and Rec will know how many boats are going to be there, or how many companies are going to be at each individual park. So in closing, the current permit guidelines that we actually have are effective. They just need to be enforced, and if they're enforced well, it will eliminate all the complaints. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, council. My name is Martin Physikas, and I'm here today to comment on the commercial boat ramp use program and the proposed change program. The program was started in 2021, overseen by the Department of Parks and Recreation, to offer an opportunity for boat and jet ski rental companies to use the boat ramps at public city parks, namely Rosen, Horton, and Burnstall Road parks for their rental operations. My father and myself were the first ones to join the program and sign a contract, and we built our businesses and our lives around it. We were there through the times of COVID and the period following Hurricane Ian, so I can give you a firsthand account of how the program is functioning. After our contracts for the 2022 calendar year expired, and we meant to renew them, we were informed that there would be only renewed till July 31st instead of full year, and we were given the explanation that some changes will be discussed through program. As we were approaching the July 31st date, we were notified that a meeting will be held July 17th, which is this Monday, where representatives of Parks and Recreation will update us on the situation. So current contract holders and myself attended this meeting, and we were told that Parks and Recreation feels that the program is not working as intended, and their solution to the problem is that they're going to take some section of Rosen Park, which I can't imagine which section, and they, they want to offer it for franchise or offer it up for a bid where a single entity could win this bid and continue doing jet ski and boat rentals from that location. The only problem with that is if a single entity can win that bid, there's currently 10 contract holders, so even in the best case scenario, nine of us would be out of business. We received the suggestion that we should conglomerate and make a collective bid, but that is simply unfeasible, and even if we were to do that, it would not guarantee that a multimillion corporation couldn't just outbid us all. Decided the reasons that, number one, that there are complaints of illegal boat rentals, which I agree, there are a lot of people doing this illegally, however, we have our contract to be able to do this legally. And they also said that the parks are overcrowded, which, as I said, we've been there, especially for, following the period after Hurricane Ian where the, the parks were overcrowded, and even then things were functional. I'm running out of time here, but I would just like to ask you to reconsider and allow us to continue. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak during citizens input?
Good morning. My name's Randall Zanoffrio. I work for Leisure Time Boat Rentals, or, well, I guess we own it. We've been doing this for two years. We have invested an enormous amount of money in the company, and just so y'all understand, we could have never even started this if it wasn't for Cape Coral. So the park systems are extremely important to us and the other boat rental companies that are out there. I'm aware that this program is not available in any other county, but we are in a marina, and just so y'all understand, that's not really a viable option if we are kicked out of the parks because there's no other marinas to go to. The current system of the permit, if we could just enforce the rules that are written, or even if you need to make them more strict, as long as we're abiding by that, it would clean up the issues at Rosen Park. So it's, I think it's more viable, definitely easier for just enforcement instead of changing the whole program. Thank you.
Any other citizens input? Seeing none, citizens input is now closed. Is there any council discussion on citizens input? Councilmember Steinki.
Thank you. Just a couple comments. One, Jason Pym, a great recommendation. I like the idea of using the shoreline at the new parks in the way that you mentioned. So I'd be fully supportive of that. I think that's a great idea. As it relates to the commercial watercraft, it was said that we're trying to get rid of the commercial watercraft that, I can assure you, that is not the case. So it's, it's not an attempt to get rid of commercial watercraft. It's an attempt to put rules in place that need to be followed, instead of being a totally self-regulated industry, but instead to have rules that both protect the, the business owners, the public, and those not making use of the services in public locations. So I was involved in the business myself. Any, any place that I was involved, there were rules that had to be followed. This is just an attempt to put rules in place and, and, and make the, you know, the activation of our waterfront, which is part of our strategic plan, safe and amenable for, for everyone. So I don't want anyone to think that one of the objectives is, is to get rid of the commercial watercraft. It's quite the opposite. It's to make, make use and activate our waterfront for our citizens and for our tourists in a way that's in the best interest of everyone involved, certainly not to get rid of commercial watercraft. Thank you.
Any other discussion by council? I'll hold my comments until we get to that particular topic in the agenda. Okay, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is 4B discussion. B1 is the commercial recreational watercraft rental permits, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Want to have Parks and Rec staff give the presentation that we worked on with, with some members of the group that just spoke? We had councilmember Steinki involved and some members of the Waterway Advisory Board kind of pulling together a stakeholder group, and this is the presentation of, of the work that was done over the last several months.
Good morning. Lucille Valencourt Kreider, Superintendent of Revenue and Special Facilities, Parks and Recreation. So we are coming back to council on council's request, presenting the voting program update committee for the whole. And I'm going to actually use, if I'm old and blind. How do we, oh, there we go. What am I trying to do? Sorry. Learn where the spacebar is. This morning, I just wanted to go over the history. The Commercial Recreational Watercraft Rental Permit Program was established in July 2020 to address issues with commercial activities relating to boats and jet skis utilizing Horton, Rosen, and Burnstall boat ramps for commercial purposes. On March 22nd of 2023, city council requested the following information on the Commercial Recreational Watercraft Rental Permit Program after receiving citizen input regarding overuse of the boat ramps. The three items the council requested from us to come back on were: what is the current usage? How many boat ramps are open, closed in the surrounding areas due to Hurricane Ian? And do other public and private boat ramps offer commercial rental of boats, jet skis, and kayaks? So we'll go to question number one, the number of daily trailer passes that are sold. We have multiple ways to do this. You can buy it online, you can come in person, or you can purchase on, at the boat ramp itself for a daily pass. So over the past two and a half years, there's been a steady increase in the daily sale of boat trailer passes. And FY '23 sales began February 15th. We stopped selling any passes due to the hurricane and did not reopen, so the first of the fiscal year was February 15th. So as year-to-date, sales of passes is projected in 2022 counts by the end of 2023 will surpass 2022 counts. So considering what that kind of means, considering how long we were actually closed for and did, and did not allow pass purchases, we're way ahead of previous sales, so. You were also asked to kind of look at the impact currently. So we did a snapshot of attendance at our boat ramps. Since this was kind of late in March, in order for us to get boots on the ground to be able to do this attendance snapshot, it did come in right towards Easter week, and it was a pretty busy time, so, but it's at the tail end of our season. So the snapshot of attendance at the boat ramps was conducted during the peak season to help capture counts at boat ramps for two weeks from, we did two hours, the 10 to 11 a.m. and the 3 to 4 p.m., and you can see the different areas of what the numbers were. The results show that Rosen is most heavily used, with Horton and Burnstall closely following in the counts. So you'll see this is the, the first week, and this is our counts on the second week that we did. So questions two and three, we were asked to see what other boat ramps were available in the area or closed due to Hurricane Ian for private marinas and jet ski rentals. So currently, in the surrounding areas, there are 28 boat ramps open at private marinas. Several marinas continue to offer boat and jet ski rentals. We did a, kind of moved the slide around quite a bit, but we, we did a summary- We did a, kind of moved the slide around quite a bit, but we did a summary of our research. So that's what you will see here with Lee County, including Fort Myers Beach, Cape Coral, and Fort Myers. Out of 11 private marinas, all are open for business. Then you can read types of businesses operated within the marina, four of which allow boat rentals. No jet ski rentals are allowed. The remaining seven marinas are for private boat owners and no watercraft rentals. So Collier County, including City of Naples, out of 11 marinas contacted, 11 are open for business. Types of businesses operated within the 11 marinas, five of the marinas allow boat rentals, and one allows jet ski rentals. The remaining five are for private boat owners, no watercraft rentals. The last one is Charlotte County, which includes Punta Gorda. Out of seven marinas contacted, six are open for business, and one marina remains closed. The type of business operated within those six marinas, two of the marinas allow boat rentals, none of the marinas currently rent jet ski rentals, and the remaining four marinas are for private boat owners, no watercraft rentals. So the next question, surrounding county and city park municipality policies at public boat ramps and launches. For Lee County, you can see, it's pretty self-explanatory in here, no jet ski rentals, no boat rentals, kayak rental only, and that is at one area, which is Manatee Park for Lee County. And then they do allow load and unload only. So you can kind of look at this and see what the response was there. So our results, the City of Cape Coral boat ramps, Horton, Rosen, and Burnt Store continue to increase usage due to Hurricane Ian, causing other ramps to close, an influx of new residents, increase in tourism, and Commercial Recreational Watercraft Rental Permit Program. The increase in usage during peak season is causing congestion for the boat launching and prohibiting safe and accessible access to launch and recover watercraft at the boat ramps. Many Florida municipal ramps are experiencing the same increase in usage. As of January 2023, the state enacted the new livery law. This law is being used by municipal governments to assist with defining usage at municipal boat ramps. So in here, it has a quick definition of what the new livery law in Florida is, beginning January 1st. Boat rental operators or liveries in Florida have been required to obtain annual permits as well as have a valid insurance for both the business operations and for the customers and the renter. And just as a notation here, there is no charge for this permit from FWC. You just apply. Livery means a person who advertises and offers a livery vessel for use by another in exchange for any type of consideration when such person does not also provide the leasing or renter with a captain, a crew, or any type of staff personnel to operate, oversee, or maintain or manage the vessel. As opposed to a commercial fishing, and this was, it comes up in our options as well, commercial fishing is the taking of fish and other seafood and resources from the oceans, rivers, and lakes for the purpose of marketing them. So we posted our current Commercial Recreational Watercraft Rental Permit Program, again, what the current rules are. We had presented this to you previously, so I'm not going to go over each one individually with you. But what we did come up with as well, from the research and the input, was operation, sorry, options to consider. So we have option one, discontinue the commercial jet ski and boat program and refer to private property, define commercial use on park property at municipal boat ramps, unload and load only for all activities, and host live, excuse me, host a liveaboard boat at Rosen to oversee weekend activities, and this could assist with all activities as well. Option two was to amend the ordinance, if necessary, to accommodate commercial use in livery. Request for proposal/franchise for commercial activity, limit kayak, jet ski, and boat rentals available at selected boat ramps. Number three, limit boat ramps for livery use. Option three was to continue the current program with increased oversight and limit capacity of boat and jet ski rentals. So we're coming to you with a recommendation of option two, amend the ordinance, request for proposal, and limit boat ramps for livery use. Any questions?
Thank you. Anything else, Mr. City Manager, before I open up the council?
Yeah, I think just some basic discussion about how we got here. So there was, administration received some complaints at Horton Park that kind of generated the situation that a lot of the traffic that was at the yacht club and some other boat ramps had kind of consolidated. We had residential usage or recreational usage that was competing for space at the boat ramp, and so that was the genesis of the discussion. And, you know, through our review and deliberation, you know, as staff, we realized that activating the waterfront is and remains one of the number-one items that our community asked for. And not everybody can afford to own a boat and/or a jet ski. And so the balance that we tried to strike in our recommendation was to provide a mechanism where the private sector can self-regulate itself, because if you wish it would franchise, that franchisee is going to have a very keen awareness of who's infringing upon their business rights. It will still provide the means of access to the water for our residents and tourists, and it will also reduce the amount of conflicts at the boat ramp because we'll have single operators at the ramps that we choose. So we tried to strike a balance between the need of the residents and the businesses as well as providing the business, and then also the primary purpose of the boat ramps that we currently have. So that's the basis of how we got here and how we derived our recommendation.
Thank you. I guess I'll weigh in first, and then I'll open it up to council. You know, for me, I've been a business owner for 36 years, and as a business owner, there are certain elements that come along with opening up in a business. For me, I do not feel that the responsibility should be on the city to provide any locations at any of our parks for private business. So my preference is option one. And the reason that I state that, whether we engage in one business or several businesses to work out of our parks, our public parks, which basically is an amenity for our community and not for business owners. If we happen to engage in any type of a partnership with any business, for me, I think that we are opening ourselves up for liability exposure. You know, if we have an agreement with some particular business and an individual goes out there and gets injured, we have a lot more at stake than those particular business owners probably, and have a lot more assets than they may have. So I'm a little concerned. We'd have to be very articulate in our agreement to make sure that that exposure wouldn't fall back on us. So that's one of the concerns that I have. You know, when you take a look at allowing businesses to work in our parks, and that's exactly what we are, we have parks that are, have boat ramps, and we have parks that do not. What are we going to offer to the rest of the community as a business owner? I own a business. Are you going to allow me to put a mobile RV where I'm running an office out of, to one of our parks so I can run my business? Are we going to let councilmember Long, maybe he has a office down in the south part of the city, are we going to let him work somewhere in one of our parks up in the north to expand his business? Councilmember Cummings has a business here in the middle of the Cape. You know, if she had a desire to go south or north, are we going to allow that? Councilmember Welsh, she has a business down in the south Cape. Maybe him and his wife would like to open up a mobile haircuttery, one of the businesses up in the north or the south, or east or west. I know councilmember Hayden here works for Spire or Associates.
I wonder if you're going to go with this one.
Yeah, so the point is, are we going to allow that for any of us, or are we going to allow that for any other businesses that we have in our community? How many business licenses, Mr. City Manager, do we have here in our city for businesses?
I don't have that exact number, but there's many.
Thousands, thousands of them. Are we going to open that opportunity up to those businesses as well at any of our parks to work out of? You know, for me, and I pulled up while we were sitting here having the discussion and did a Google search on boat rentals here in Cape Coral. And if you look at the map, there's many. There's probably over a dozen within five miles of here. And they're on Del Prado, they're, you know, they're at private locations. If a business owner wants to open a business, I fully support that. I think it's a great amenity for our city. I just do not think that we should be allowing businesses to be run out of our parks. That's not what the parks were designed for. Parks are designed for the amenity of our community and our residents. I don't even know if any of these individuals are even residents of our community. Are they coming from North Fort Myers? Are they coming from Fort Myers, somewhere else in Lee County, and just running a business out of our parks? I don't know that answer. You know, for me, if you're going to be a business owner, you know, there's responsibilities that come along with that, and sometimes that's having a location to run your business out of. I do not think it's the responsibility of a local municipality to provide that amenity to those business owners so they can run their business. That's private industry, not public industry. You know, we're a public municipal government. So for me, I would not support option two or option three. If it comes back for a vote, I would vote no. I do not think that we should be in the business of allowing businesses to run out of our parks. Now, if we had a piece of property on a canal, which we probably do, that they would have access, and we want to lease that property for them to run their business, I have no problems with that. But I do have a problem if it's running out of a public park. So for that, I won't support it. Councilmember Welsh?
Thank you, Mayor. I have to pretty much agree with everything you're saying. There still are plenty of properties, waterfront, commercial properties available in the city of Cape Coral. I know there's a few just across the street from where my business is in the downtown Cape. So there's plenty of opportunity for a commercial company to either rent or build or become a business. I agree, it's not like I can just bring and set up a mobile haircuttery in a park and hope that that's fine. So I agree with you that out of our public parks, I think they're, should be left for the public, or they launch the boat and they leave. You know, if a commercial company wants to come in and use a boat ramp, that's fine, but to keep a boat there or to keep jet skis there, I think it's clogging up for our residents. Yeah, so I don't know if I would support option two. And I also don't think that we need to be in the business of a P3 or anything like that for rentals. Like I said, there's plenty of commercial property available. The last thing the city needs to do is become a landlord for more things, just like I don't think the city, I think we're going to talk about this later with Academic Village. I don't think the city needs to be a property owner. You know, I'm glad that we're moving some of the properties that we took back, but I think our job is to be a city, not to be a landlord or a real estate mogul. So I agree with your thoughts on this. Thank you.
Councilmember Shepherd?
Yeah, I have different thoughts. I think we should be open-minded when it comes to our parks. We have P3s, we have restaurants at our parks, they're businesses. We have a park, yacht club with a restaurant. Yeah, it's not a water activity, but it's a business. If you look at what's happening, there's a new trend going on in the country where parks create more atmosphere to become bigger magnets for people to go to them, and they build these little kiosks, little huts of little, of businesses that are disappearing in our culture, from crafts to a bike repair shop to, you know, to a hair, they get a haircut, a coffee shop somewhere to sit and read the paper. I'm more open-minded. I can envision parks with a path with little, little business, little small businesses, kiosks that are rented out to different types of businesses that would become a draw to the park and also bring income to help pay for the improvements of the park. I think all the parks have different identities, they have different draws. I can picture, like the Sands Park, for instance, I can picture that having a little key, little shop there just to go and have coffee and read the paper, and maybe they sell a breakfast sandwich or something like that, just to sit and relax, somebody to go there, bring their grandchildren to play on the swings and sit there and have a coffee. I wouldn't be against that kind of business, being at the park. I don't see that as a negative, I see that as a positive. You know, every insurance has to, I could see us having regulations with businesses, and I'm sure we do with the restaurant that we have P3 on, that they have to have proper insurance to cover all liabilities so it doesn't become a liability to the city. I'm sure there's businesses that we wouldn't want at our parks, but I want to be open-minded of the possibilities of businesses that could be at parks to improve that particular park's identity. All the parks in the city have a different kind of venue, and to add little kiosks, little businesses in these parks that add to that particular park, I see as an asset. Maybe someone on staff or even the city manager knows of any of these type of parks that they might have seen to help explain this vision that I'm talking about. But we know that because of real estate costs, there are businesses that we don't see in our communities anymore. You don't see the little bakeries anymore. Barber shops are having an extremely hard time existing because of real estate costs. The little candy shop, you know, little hobby stores, little music shop, a lot of these things can't exist anymore. We have to create ways for them to exist. They are a need and asset for our community. Just having your bike fixed, you know, I'm sure we have all been to parks where you've seen these things I'm talking about. If you have a child interested in art, I can picture a small kiosk in a park that just sells art supplies and has somebody there giving classes. It creates a draw to the park, it's an asset to the community. So I want to be open-minded. I don't want to be completely standoffish on saying no businesses at our parks. I just think it's something to talk about and something to learn. And like I said, if there's anything that staff could, any information staff has on what I'm talking about, please give us information. Thank you.
Councilmember Steinkie.
Thank you. I certainly can appreciate councilmember Shepherd's remarks as it relates to other businesses, but in this case, we are focused on the commercial watercraft business. And for me, the concern there came when the complaints arose from Horton Park was that the commercial watercraft business was infringing upon other people's ability to enjoy the park. And so I think when we're looking at what businesses have done out of the parks, I think a consideration has to be made, and especially in this case, that if that business were to infringe upon others and reduce their ability to enjoy the park, that that's a different animal. And so I've said from the start that I believe that the boat ramps are certainly there as an amenity for all residents, and the idea of a boat ramp is launch and recovery, not repetitive launch and recovery on a short-term basis, which is required in the jet ski business. And so for a boat rental company to launch a boat that's being And so, um, for a boat rental company, uh, to launch a boat that's being, uh, used for the day, uh, and for, and for that purveyor to then depart, uh, and come back at the end of the day or two days later or whatever, uh, uh, the rental period was for and to, and retrieve that vessel and leave the park, um, certainly understandable. Um, but to, um, maintain the equipment at the park all day, um, that is conducting a business in the park. And, and that is something that I can't support. Um, as far as franchising goes, as we look at ways to activate the waterfront throughout the city, if, if there is a way, um, to, to infuse a watercraft business, uh, in one of the parks where it doesn't infringe upon, um, the other people that are looking to enjoy the park, then I certainly, uh, would consider that. Uh, but for, for the business to, if you will, uh, kind of coagulate that, uh, that, that, the boat ramps and the ability to, uh, have boats at the docks, uh, prior to retrieval or immediately after launch to take up those spaces, um, it, it just, it, it slows down the ability to launch and retrieve and it infringes on the other, infringes on the other, uh, residents that we have and tourists that bring their own boats, um, to launch and recover their, their own boats as well. So that's, that's where I stand on it.
Thank you. Uh, any other, uh, council members? It looks like, uh, three or four of us have spoken. We've still got Mr. Long, that's coming. Uh, Councilmember Hayden, then once everybody, I'll come back to you.
Yeah, I think this one, this one's difficult. I think, uh, most things, most things for me are black and white after I've studied the information, but this one is, and I'm, I'm inclined to agree with the mayor. You made some valid points. It might be a bit of an exaggeration to start comparing, um, other businesses that go in there because you can make a case, as Councilmember Shepard said, for the, for the boathouse, for what's happening in Sunsplash, for spring training that exists at Lee County Park, for things that exist, private businesses that exist at Lakes Park. So, you know, specific to, um, the marine business and jet skis, you know, I know we have a order for our parks and we want them to, uh, uh, you know, be there as an amenity. So based on just that, um, based on that business, I think, I think staff proposed a solution with option two, but, you know, at this point, I'm, I'm leaning towards option one. Thanks, Mayor.
Councilmember Cosn?
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, um, so my understanding is, I think it was 2021, 2020 is when this current program started. Is that correct, Mr. City Manager?
2020.
And what did we do before that?
Before that, it was unregulated and there was complaints at the yacht club because they were at the yacht club. They generate, parks generated this program and said, well, we're going to remove the yacht club from the availability of, of the parks where you could operate, and they were moved to Horton.
So this was a response to an issue. And now that we've been living with this for three years, we're seeing new issues.
Yeah, in, after the hurricane, the yacht club closed and so all the boaters that needed to, that would typically use the yacht club were moved up to Horton and Horton became a bottleneck. And so it, it basically re-infused all the problems that were at the yacht club. We took the deliveries and moved them up to Horton. The yacht club closed, all that boat traffic needed to go to Horton. In November, December, January, we started getting emails saying Horton is, is a problem.
Okay. Thank you for that information. So I agree with the philosophy that parks should be for residents. Um, but my problem is that we started allowing this three years ago. And now we're talking about just taking it back, basically, if we go with what a couple of us have, have talked about, which is just not allowing it altogether. Um, and I think that's wrong to do for several reasons. I don't think it's being a good neighbor to just pull the rug out. Um, I like the idea, someone mentioned, this probably won't work because of where they're located, but the pocket parks or the, um, like the unfinished boat ramps that we have, is that an option for these people to use? Or is it the, none of the locations close enough to the, where they really want to go?
In our discussions with them, being on the river and being able to get out to the intercoastal is, is the, the preferred location. Um, in our option number two, um, that we had put forward, we don't have any, uh, decision-making yet on, on where it would be appropriate. Obviously, the whole goal of option two would be to remove the conflicts, minimize the conflicts. Um, so the freshwater boat ramps could be an option, the saltwater boat ramps could be an option. Um, the whole idea of, of option two is to minimize the, the, the business enterprises, the, the quantity of them that would be operating and enter into the, the best possible, uh, relationship with the best operator that submits.
And it would be one operator per location, correct?
Yes. So what, what we, what we would envision under an op, an option two is, um, in a franchise, we would be looking to see, uh, qualifications, um, you know, track record, um, n- number of available, um, you know, skis or boats that they have to make sure that if something goes down and somebody doesn't show up and it's still available. And then we would look for, uh, a franchise fee, paid on revenues, just like we have with L C E C, um, our solid waste franchiser. You're giving basically somebody access to a market that, that they cannot get elsewhere. And so, uh, the franchise is kind of the, the payment for getting access to that market. Um, I under, I understand the, the discussion points about, um, retaining parks in a, uh, purely recreational, uh, usage. Um, what we were, what we were looking at is the opportunity to, uh, generate a different income stream, uh, to support our parks and rec programming, uh, getting people to the water, um, and, and, uh, helping support, uh, business. So there was, there's always competing interests. Um, so, you know, we can go, we can go any, any way that council wants. You know, I am taking this, taking down kind of where you all would like to be because at the end of this, we need to figure out if we're sending them a notice saying we're shutting the program down and give them time to demobilize, or if we send them a letter to notify them that, get your pen and paper ready. We're, we're gonna, might be issuing an R P. So.
Okay. Thank you for that. Um, having said that, um, I support option two. Thank you.
Councilmember Long?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'll keep it brief. Um, it's option one for me, uh, for a lot of the reasons that are already stated. I did just want to echo Councilmember Steinkie's sentiments, though, that we've got to be careful with the blanket statement that we don't necessarily want to engage in business in our parks. Uh, I think it's more, to his point, uh, revolved around the synergy that, that, that business, that prospective business creates with the park. And so I think in a lot of instances, um, many of us have visited these boat ramps or have heard stories about being at the boat ramps and some of the issues that are caused by proliferation, um, of the rental businesses and, and some of the issues that that causes. And so for that reason alone, um, that's why I'm going with option one. Uh, I don't, um, disagree with the intent of these businesses to, to create it. I think that obviously it's a low, uh, entry cost from a business perspective. I'm sure that, uh, the $1,800 a year, I believe that I saw somewhere is a hell of a lot cheaper, heck of a lot cheaper than, um, some of these private companies are gonna do. So at the end of the day, I, I just want to make clear that we're not shutting these businesses down. We're requiring that they move somewhere else, like any other private business, and the, and the cost, uh, of operating that business is gonna go up. Um, unfortunate, that's the unfortunate reality and the result of going with that option. Um, but at the same time, I think it, it makes more sense to, to go that direction than allow or try to provoke, uh, dedicate staff time to creating, uh, a workaround for an issue that I think is still gonna continue to cause, um, constant oversight and issues within the parks. Thank you.
Councilmember Shepard?
Yeah, I just want to say I agree with a lot of what Councilman, uh, Stinky had mentioned, um, that we don't want to put any, uh, business in a park that overwhelms the park in any way. It hurts or impedes, uh, the use of our citizens being able to use. So I, I get your points. I understand. Um, and I think we should do that with, uh, all businesses looked at in the future, no matter what they are, to make sure that they're only an asset to the community and they don't create a burden or take away the use for the citizens to use the park. So I'm a boater and I, and you, you opened my eyes to some of the things you said. I are correct. We don't want it to overwhelm the ramp so that just our regular citizens don't have the opportunity. So I understand. Just want to say that. Thank you.
Councilmember Steinkie?
Thank you. I'm, I'm truly sensitive, uh, to Councilmember Cosn's, uh, comments as it relates to pulling the rug out, uh, from underneath. I know that we, um, you know, have an expiration date of, uh, July 31st, um, or 30th, however many days are in July. Um, I, I think that alternative, uh, means, uh, needs to be accomplished by, by each of the business owners. Um, and so I know that, uh, the business I was involved in, um, there were only a certain number of, um, permits allowed uh, on Fort Myers Beach. The, um, you couldn't just apply for one. If one wasn't available, it wasn't available. You couldn't have the business. That's not being done here. Um, that's, uh, you, I don't think that the, the idea is restraint of trade. Um, but the idea is that, is that you find a way to operate the business, um, that works, uh, within the city. And so, uh, you know, to launch a vessel and have it at a property all day, where it can be taken out, brought back in, taken out, brought back in, that's, that doesn't affect the park, um, I think would be the, 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 the good decision. The idea is finding that, that location where that vessel can remain for the day, that's not city property, um, where, where passengers can come and depart and return all day long, where the vessel only has to be launched once, um, and, and retrieved once. And if that launch and retrieval was done at a park, that, just like anyone else can launch it and retrieve it, uh, that doesn't infringe upon, uh, the, the other residents, the other boaters that are trying to use the ramps, uh, in, in the way that the ramp was designed. And not just the ramp. It's, it's certainly, it's the dock that's there, um, uh, for the boats to come off the trailer, sit there while the trailer gets parked and then get on the boat and leave. Uh, and conversely, when the, when the boat comes back, um, tied up to the dock, get the trailer, back it down and get it out. So, um, it's, it's not just the ramps. It's certainly the docks, uh, that are, that are there as well. So, um, I, I, I don't believe option one, two, or three is the panacea. Um, but I, but I do believe that, um, that option one is the direction to go. But I also believe that we need to give some consideration, uh, to those businesses to give, to give them an opportunity to transition into another way of doing business rather than the way that it's being done now. So along with, along with option one, um, I think that we have to give them time to, to get a workaround and not put them out of business.
Is that all? Councilmembers, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Cummings, uh, did you have any comments on this topic since you come back in? Okay. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you for the discussion. Option one is, um, has, is the majority. Considering what the Councilmember Steinkie indicated, the, the permits that they are operating under do have a, a life expectancy. Um, if you would like to get, provide any guidance on what you consider is an acceptable time to demobilize and, and consider alternatives, uh, I would, I would take that input at this time. Otherwise, um, we'll make a decision and, and give them what we, what we would feel would be adequate. But if you have any, um, any thoughts, I'd be open to hearing what you, what your thoughts are.
And right now the permits expire July 31st? Okay. Councilmember Cosn?
Yeah, I think we've got to allow some time for a transition. So, um, I was thinking six months might be appropriate. Or is that too long? I don't know.
I, I was thinking 60 days. That's what I was thinking. Yeah. Well, where are we at this, the August? So that would be middle of August, you know, October 1st. That's about.
I think the important thing to discuss, considering the basis for most of your decision, which is having them free and open and available for residents, basically in November, we're gonna be hitting season when people are back here. So the, the question for me is, if I may kind of guide it, do you want, do you want them there past seas, when season starts or not? That's.
I guess we all can weigh in on that. October 1st, that's about two and a half months, you know, so that, and then that's, you know, before season really starts kicking in. I know right after October, people start coming in. So that'd be my preference. Uh, Councilmember Steinkie?
Thank you. I thi, I think our heaviest onslaught here is January, February, and March. Um, and, uh, certainly for, um, their industry, uh, the, the visitors that come during Thanksgiving and Christmas, uh, for them to have things to do and the business that's done by those businesses during that time, uh, I, I think would be, uh, would certainly help them, if you will, financially as well. I would be in favor of making it December 31st.
Councilmember Welsh?
Um, my, my initial thought was three months, but I'm okay with it till the end of the year, knowing that we are, um, making quite a big change. Um, and I don't want to put anyone's business out of business, but that would give them ample time to even maybe join together and rent one place for all six of them. You know, there's, like I said, there's plenty of, uh, strip commercial on Del Prado where I know there's a couple of boat rental companies. And, you know, if it's a matter of cost, then, you know, you gotta find a way to either rent a commercial space or, or learn to, as Councilmember Steinkie said, launch the vessel and retrieve the vessel only. So there's different ways you can, um, accommodate that. So I'm, I'm, I'm okay with the end of the year or with October. Thank you.
Anybody else want to weigh in on that? So we can give staff direction?
For me, we did the food truck ordinance. It was 90 days. I think it's important that we kind of create some sort of uniformity as we move forward and make these regulations. But the end of the year is fine as well. But I just would keep that in mind. We gave 90 days when we enacted the changes in the food truck ordinance. 90 days is, is a significant amount of time. So that would be my input. But in all reality, we'd beat this to death, I think. If, if the 31st is the 31st, then let's move on.
Thank you very much.
All right. Any other discussion on that topic? Seeing none, I'll move on to, uh, B two, proposed contract for development, Academic Village. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, the city staff has, um, gotten to the point where we're ready to prepare, uh, present the contract that we have for Academic Village. Uh, we're gonna, we're basically intending on following the same process that we utilize for the Seven Islands, wherein we would present to you kind of where we're at, get some feedback from you, uh, see if there's any last-minute items that, that you would like us to consider or, or fine-tune. And then ultimately, uh, we'll bring you the finalized contract for your approval at, at city council.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Connie Baron, Assistant City Manager. As a lead member of the city's negotiating team on the Academic Village project, I'm here this morning, um, along with several representatives from T R G Development to provide counsel with an overview of the proposed contract for the development of the property known as Academic Village. Uh, when I was sitting here and I came in, I, uh, the, the Beatles song started coming in my head about the, uh, the long and winding road. Because when you look at the Academic Village property and the process that we've gone through to get here today to this presentation, it's been a long and winding road. I was putting together the history and it's just hard for me to believe that it was 20 years ago that we purchased this property up, um, at Kismet, Del Prado, with the intent of developing an academic, uh, village, an educational facility. Through many, uh, starts and stops along the way, it became, uh, fairly clear to us that an academic village was not going to be a viable option. Um, as noted up there, we purchased the property in February 2003 for $6.8 million. We've made some impro, not improvements, but we did have to pay almost a million dollars to purchase freshwater mitigation credits for the required monitor. freshwater mitigation credits for the required monitoring of the almost 42-acre conservation easement that's on the property. Counsel, it seems like February was a very popular month for activity here. In February of '21, the council amended the comp plan and changed the land use to the mixed use. And then February of last year, council declared the property as surplus property with the intent to sell the parcel. So as far as the timeline for the call for offers, in March, we issued a call for offers for developers to submit proposals to the city as to what they would like to develop there. By July, we had scheduled presentations from three of the proposers, and the evaluation team met, scored the proposals, and then the city manager, former city manager, selected TRG and instructed the negotiation team to begin negotiations with TRG. Those negotiations began in September. They continued with internal negotiations as far as external negotiations through the end of the year. At the beginning of this year, we met in January, we gained consensus with TRG as far as the terms, and then we had to do some mapping and some other detailed work, and we provided that to TRG representatives, and then they provided us with a signed contract in the middle of May. So we're here today to provide a presentation to council, again with some of the deal points. If council is amenable to these deal points, this particular project, the development contract will be on the agenda on the 26th for introduction with a public hearing to be scheduled on August the 16th. So these are some of the key deal points with this particular parcel. TRG has offered a purchase price of $17.5 million. As a note, the last appraised value that we provided on that property was in March of last year, and the appraised value at that time was $13.2 million. TRG will put $200,000 as a refundable deposit to escrow within five days after council approves the contract. There's another $325,000 deposit to escrow within five days after the due diligence period, and then the balance will be due at closing. The timeline that has been provided by TRG is that their due diligence period will continue for about 90 days, but they could get up to three extensions. Each of the single 30-day extensions would require a deposit, additional deposit to escrow of $20,000. The buyer has committed to spend a quarter of a million dollars on their due diligence, and they are going to provide the city with any of the reports that they receive. As far as the zoning, the developer intends to develop the parcel using a PUD, a Planned Unit Development. So they will be applying to rezone the property to a Planned Unit Development zoning district. The application will include different uses. The first one, the 23% conservation easement is required on that property. 3% would be the minimum commercial that they would provide in their development. 15% in light industrial/flex would also be a minimum that they would do in that development, and they will provide up to a maximum of 20% residential. The approval period, the buyer has 270 days after the due diligence is completed to rezone the property to the PUD zoning district and obtain the approved site development plan. And the closing date will then occur 30 days after the expiration of the approval period or the approved site plan, whichever comes first. The buyer and seller, we have agreed to meet on a monthly basis to ensure that the project remains on schedule. That's our brief overview of the deal points. Josh Wills is here from TRG, and he is going to present their, what they are proposing for the parcel.
Good morning, council, staff. My name is Sawyer Smith. I'm here with my partner Terry Kramer and our communications director Madison Vogelbach on behalf of TRG. As stated, Josh Wills is going to walk through a brief presentation outlining what it is that TRG is going to do. And Josh is here with his team, John Orlando, Chad Clevenger, and Ryan Fuesting. TRG is an interesting company. They're vertically integrated, as you'll see, and they're not just paper developers that are going to entitle land and flip it. These guys actually build things and get things done. It's nice to see that Cape Coral is pushing to bring in more jobs and more industrial land, and that's what TRG is going to be doing here. This is, like I said, this is a group that moves a lot of dirt. They're vertically integrated. Mr. Orlando is head of construction. You've got engineering acquisitions. So it's been a real pleasure over the last year or so for us to be involved in this, and I think it's actually quite a bit longer than that. And it has been, even in our short tenure, a long and windy road with a storm in the middle of all of this that really changed a lot of dynamic. And I applaud your staff for how they were able to continue working on this project while rescuing their entire city. It was an interesting experience that we all had and quite a pleasure. You're a really good team. Now with that, I will hand the microphone and the computer over to Mr. Wills.
Thank you, Sawyer. Appreciate that. Good morning, everybody. Josh Wills with TRG to discuss Del Prado Point as what we're calling the academic site, academic village site redevelopment. With me is some folks from my team, John Orlando, Chad Clevenger, and Ryan Fuesting. Ryan and Chad are actually new to our team in the past two months, and we hired them specifically to help manage this project. We are staffing up in anticipation to help make this a reality. So I'm going to walk through a little bit about the project. So let's talk about our family of companies. Our parent company, Leadwise, is a 35-year-old holding company, and within that, we have several sister companies. So CESO is our architecture and our engineering company. They just celebrated their 35th birthday. They have 400 employees across 13 offices. Two of those offices were opened in the past year. They provide architecture and engineering services to all major brands, retail, industrial, transportation, institutional companies. Really great outfit. I think that they're up to the challenge of this one. Three Corps is our sister general contractor. They're based in Dallas and Sarasota. There's years of experience within the leadership of that company. They just finished an Amazon building in Port St. Lucie. They have two construction projects that are active in Brevard County, Florida. One that'll be kicking off in 60 days in Marion County, Florida. They're super active. They have a project they're just finishing in Dallas, Texas. So a lot of experience there. DDC Management is a residential lot developer, working with major home builder brands like NVR, Ryan Homes, folks like that. Hardison Homes is our home builder that is based in Orlando. They have several communities that are open and for sale. And then lastly, of TRG, we are the commercial and industrial developer rounding out the family of companies. So let's talk a little bit about who we are and our purpose. So these are kind of our core tenants here. The first one is humility. There are no egos at TRG. There are no egos at Leadwise. Trust. No company can really, you know, grow without that. You lose somebody's trust, you've lost it forever. Work-life balance. We pride ourselves in treating all the employees very well. We think that, you know, that provides a great place to work, and you get great results out of that. And then growth. That's all aspects. That's professional, that's personal, and that's spiritual. So here's a map of all of our offices. Again, about 400 employees, kind of scattered across. We were started in Ohio, so that's why there's three different offices there, but scattered across the U.S. there. So a lot of you folks already know this, but why Florida and why Cape Coral? One thing I want to touch on here is corporate headquarters, they are being naturally drawn to Florida. Great business environment down here. And then the 20,000 manufacturers that currently exist and more that would like to come here, but there's simply no space. And why Cape Coral? Well, as referenced before, there's a 7% annual population growth rate. The secret's out. Cape Coral is a great place to live. We think there's a great opportunity here to bring businesses in that want to be in Florida, bring them to a great spot in Cape Coral, let them operate, grow the city. So... And then our development plan. So as mentioned, we are vertically integrated, and what that means is we can design, we can do the engineering, we can put together the plan, and we can build it. We don't need to hire outside services for that. That's all within TRG and Leadwise. We have many experienced professionals that are going to be working on this. As mentioned, my team, and then we'll get to the rest of the team at the end of the presentation. I think we have over 100 years of development and construction experience. So what does this look like? So District A is our, kind of our most flexible piece. That's going to be retail, commercial, flex, and light industrial. And we'll get to kind of what those mean as we move forward here. District C, which is to the north, is kind of our mixed residential piece, and we'll talk about a little bit what that'll entail. But District B is interesting, and I'll have Ryan Fuesting come up and talk a little bit about that. District B, we really see as a true light industrial, and I think we have a very specific plan for that section. So this is the area of the site everybody's aware of, corner of Kismet and Del Prado. This is kind of our bubble plan. So as mentioned, A is kind of our most flexible district. We envision activating that corner with good retail, good commercial, driving traffic to the site. As it kind of fades back from that corner, we envision more flex and more light industrial within that district. And District C, since there is a residential to the north there, we want to provide a buffer to those residents. So we're going to put in a mixed residential to kind of add that buffer and transition as we get down to District A. And District B, I'll have Ryan come up and talk a little bit about the opportunity there.
Thanks, Josh. Hello and good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to present today on this fantastic project here in Cape Coral. My name's Ryan Fuesting, and I'm the Director of Acquisitions for TRG. I will be an active member on the team, working directly with the city to bring this great project to life. On a personal note, my in-laws own a home in Bonita Springs, Florida, off Bonita Beach Road, so I'm very familiar with the area and the region. On a professional level, I have a background in retail, residential, and industrial development, specifically cold storage industrial development. Through market analytics and research at TRG, we've identified Cape Coral, specifically Del Prado Point, as a great opportunity for a state-of-the-art, Class A, multimillion-dollar cold storage industrial facility. The cold storage industrial, the cold storage industry benefits from steady demand and is insulated from economic disruptions. Inflation and economic uncertainty can pose a risk to many sectors. However, research shows there is no evidence of diminishing effects that directly affect the cold storage industry. Industries looking for temperature-controlled storage include, but are not limited to data and tech companies, Big Pharma, pharmaceuticals, cosmetics, floral, and most importantly, grocery and food. It is anticipated that 100 million square feet of cold storage warehouse space will be needed to service the ramp-up of online consumer sales fueled by pandemic, by the pandemic resulting in long-term demand for more industrial cold storage. Thank you, and with that, I'll give it back to Josh.
Thanks, Ryan. So in District A, we envision some retail here, and this is just kind of sample elevations of what you see from Del Prado, Kismet, kind of your typical power center type retail. We've already been having some discussions with the users about, you know, what they would do at the site, what they want to see. So this is just kind of a sample elevation. And this is an impact analysis on that retail. This was made using M-Plan software, which is kind of an industry standard. We took some industry benchmarks on employment and income, and so this is kind of the construction impact of that retail project itself. So about 24 million total. Light industrials, this is actually the elevation of the building, the two buildings are building in Dallas, Texas. It's our Core 45 project. So this is kind of a sample of what that would look like down here. And again, the M-Plan impact analysis on that construction, approximately $82 million. Quick service restaurants, we kind of see these as being the outlots for that retail power center. You know, we envision seven to 10 of these out there. They might not all be quick service restaurants, but that's kind of what the market is showing right now. Could be a bank, but this is kind of what we're seeing out in the market, is being very active on those out parcel development opportunities. So again, the M-Plan economic analysis, about $9 million. And then our flex space. So our flex space is the thing I think we get most questions about as to what goes in it. It's flexible, as the name intends. So that could be manufacturing, and that could be packaging and kitting, and that could be material supply, research and development space, office, a restaurant, brewery, distillery concept, showrooms, things like that, like this, like to go into these flex spaces. And so we see this as actually the biggest opportunity, not only to bring in outside businesses, but also support some of the local businesses that may need new Class A state-of-the-art space. So this is where we really see a lot of the opportunity. And again, the M-Plan economic analysis, about $42 million. The residential, we envision kind of two sections here. So one section would be the four-story, as you can see there, four-story, kind of garden style, resort style multifamily. You can see kind of a sample amenity there. And then the other section would be townhomes. Townhomes would be for rent, and what we're doing is providing workforce housing to support the businesses that come in. So somebody can come in, take a job at one of the flex spaces, for instance, live in one of these rental units for a year before they find their permanent home here in Cape Coral. That's the impact analysis of the residential piece in construction. After construction's over, this is kind of the post-construction impact. I believe it's over 10 years, so total direct employment, indirect and induced is almost 900 employees, and your total output is about $129 million. So as referenced, the contract terms, 17 and a half million dollars purchase price, $20,000 will go into escrow once the contract is signed. We have 90 days for our due diligence, so that's inspections, that's doing all of our studies, environmental, geotech, survey, everything we need to do to study the property. There are extensions built in, and those have non-refundable deposits attached to them, and those would be things like we encountered an issue that we didn't plan on, like an environmental issue we need to figure out. Then the additional deposit of $325,000 goes in after our due diligence expires, and then we start our approvals period. I think it's worth noting, although we've committed to spending a certain dollar figure in the due diligence period, once the project is approved, TRG will spend about a million and a half bucks on due diligence, on design, on engineering fees, because we have to pay our engineers. So that's in addition to the earnest money we're putting up in the contract. There's our team. I think we're missing Chad. That's kind of the full team here. And again, you're going to get myself, Ryan's going to kind of run point on this one, John and Chad are really going to drive this one forward. So I appreciate the time. I want to thank the, really the selection committee for selecting us, we're really humbled by that. The negotiation team for figuring out a, I think, a contract that's fair for everybody, and then also to you guys for at least hearing us out. So thank you very much.
Does council have any questions that they would like to ask TRG?
The only quick question I have, when you talk about districts A, B, and C, do we know what size those parcels, maybe acreage, for each one of those districts?
Yeah, we have that. I don't have that with me today. I can certainly provide those numbers, absolutely.
Okay. Councilmember Cosson? I'm sorry. Councilmember Steinke?
Thank you. A couple of questions. The multifamily that you have there, is that all going to be considered to be rental or any for...
Correct, correct.
All rental?
Correct.
All rental?
Correct.
The percentage of, of use in there, it, it adds up to 51 to 61% for me.
Yeah, so.
Those are minimums.
Those are minimums. So a minimum of 3% commercial, a minimum of 15% light industrial. We were not sure quite what that mix looks like yet, so there may be, you know, you may get 25% commercial, 25 light industrial, and the rest of it kind of fills in. We not, we just wanted to commit to the city that there was going to be a certain amount of commercial, a certain amount of light industrial, and a certain amount of residential, just so the city has some comfort as to what we're doing.
So the, but, but, but the 20% is the maximum residential.
Correct.
So it'll be 80% commercial or industrial.
Correct.
Okay? And the, with, with the plans for some of the types of businesses that are there, has there been any thought to hotel conference-type facilities?
We have thought about that. Hotels are struggling right now, frankly, in the development world. The market isn't great, and we frankly serve the market. So it is something we've discussed, and we had, definitely haven't closed the door on it, but I think currently, as we sit today, it's, it's really not viable. But in the future, market conditions could change.
Okay. I would, I would encourage you, as you would communicate with those, you know, interested or maybe less than interested, as you've said, parties, for them, when they're considering the opportunity for, if you will, you know, nightly rentals, for them to certainly look into the amount of privately-owned VRBO, Airbnb, those type of properties that are here. There are multiple thousands of them that, when you're considering demand in the area, the, if, if you will, limited amount of hotel rooms, doors that are available here, the, the, the private market is, is picking up that business. And, and the only thing that a VRBO, you know, doesn't bring is a place to hold meetings and conferences, and as a city, as we're trying to attract larger organizations to come here for conferences and whatnot, that there's a great opportunity there that I would certainly like to see at this, if you will, northeastern gateway to the city. And the last is, being in the real estate business myself, I just have to say that, the, the, the escrow amounts seem extremely light to me, just extremely light. And in, in our materials, it says that the, that the, that the escrow is refundable. I'd like to know refundable until, until when? It looks like we're looking at taking this property off of the market for 1%, and then after a 90-day due diligence period that can be extended, another 2% is brought, and so the property is going to be off the market for a year for 3% on a multimillion-dollar property, you know? So when, when, when does the money go hard?
After, after due diligence expires.
And a part, a part during negotiation, a part of the commitment to the, to spending money was to, to get above market. Market is usually around 3% or 4% in a commercial transaction like this. So TRG put in the contract, we, we negotiated into the contract, a minimum spend of 250,000, but as you heard Mr. Will say, this is far more significant than that in, in the spend, which is akin to more money hard. You don't get that back.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Councilmember Welsh?
Thank you. Councilmember Stanky kind of touched on it. I was running some of these numbers as well, minimum and maximum, and, you know, it didn't equal to 100. So my question is, is it 10 to 20% or is it 20% residential?
Currently, it's 20%.
Okay. So in the presentation, it says 10 to 20, and it's kind of like, well, it might be 10, but no, it's definitely going to be 20, and I'm pretty sure that's what's going to happen. Now, is that 20% of the total land area or 20% of the actual building, buildable area? Because I know there's some conservation land out there.
Correct.
And things like that. So is that 20% of the entire?
Entire site.
Yeah. So with that, that 20% and only 3% commercial, it seems like the numbers are a little bit skewed to me personally, that we want this to be more of a commercial park and development. I, I get what you're doing. I, I agree, light industrial out there is going to be great, so the 15% there is good. I prefer, prefer to see something closer to 15% in commercial as well, because that's really what the city's lacking. And what I'm trying to get at is I don't want another apartment complex built and then just parking lots in front of it, waiting for commercial to come. So is there anything in the agreement that says you have to build this commercial at the same time you're building the residential, or is your plan to build the residential first?
Well, it's going to be multi-phased, obviously, but we'll have multiple projects going on at the same time. That's how you get scale. So the residential will be started immediately. I would imagine the retail, commercial part of this will also be started at that same time, with light industrial falling quickly thereafter. Cold storage could start immediately as well, depending on how marketing efforts for those tenants go. So a lot remains to be seen, but, you know, our intent is to start this as soon as possible and finish as quickly as we can due to, you know, with taking into consideration market conditions.
And then could you just explain to me, in layman's terms, what's cold storage is? Is that just more storage units that we've been seeing popping up, or is it more of like a server farms, things like that?
I can have Ryan come back up and give a quick.
Yeah, because I mean, just using that word "storage" has been a very negative connotation in the city recently, so I'd like some more explanation from me, as well as any resident that might be watching this.
And briefly, Councilman, the reason that the presentation said 10 to 20 is because that's what we negotiating the contract, it was, it's just a reflection of that.
Yeah, cold storage is very specific and very specialized to a wide range of industries, including Big Pharma, like I mentioned, grocery, food chain, you know, vital products to, that need to stay refrigerated or cold or frozen, everyday products that we use. So not just any storage, it's, it's a very specialized type of, not only product, but facility as well.
Okay. Yeah, it's just, it's a negative word right now, storage facilities, and people seeing them pop up everywhere. So I wanted to make sure that I understood, as well as any resident listening, that cold storage doesn't mean that we're just putting air-conditioned storage units places.
These are, these are frozen boxes, you know, rented out to companies like Mayor.
I did a quick Google search and, and looked at it, but I wanted to have that so that if I get emails later, that at least definitely I understood completely. So thank you for that. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, and I had a couple of extra questions. I tried to, the one, the one question, I know you don't have the answer to. And the reason that I asked that question, we have 171 acres here that we're talking about, and we know 41 acres is conservation property, so that only leaves 130 acres. And I guess before I get into some of my comments, I've got a question for this city attorney. Can we put deed restrictions in this sale? And the reason that I asked that question, can we say a certain percentage of commercial, a certain percentage of residential, and a certain percentage of light industrial? You know, the, the whole initiative with this property was to enhance light industrial commercial property, but when you look at the numbers, it doesn't reflect what our intent was in the beginning. So with deed restrictions, are we allowed to do that?
If, if I, if I, Mayor?
I'm asking the city attorney a question first.
Well, I have been, I have not been part of the negotiations of any of this. We have not done deed restrictions regarding percentages of uses. Previously, we have, have sold property with deed restrictions prohibiting certain uses, but not spelling out any percentage of specific uses.
But is that possible?
It could, it could possibly be done. We have not done that.
Yeah, because what my concern is, you know, if you had the numbers that we have before us today, and I don't even really agree with those numbers, but, you know, when, when a person comes forward with a PUD, I guess, you know, we have the opportunity, because the PUD has to come before us, we always have that opportunity to deny it, I guess, if, if the numbers are different than maybe what's been shown in this presentation. But if you just look at the numbers themselves, you know, 3% commercial, 15% light industrial, 20% is going to be residential, and 23% is conservation land, you add that up, it's 61%. You know, where's the other 39%? I know we have streets and, and other things as well.
No, what, what's happening here, and I think this is getting confused or lost in the presentation, we set a maximum on the residential. They can only do up to 20% residential use. So on its face, you're going to have an 80/20 development, 80 non-residential, 20 residential. What we did with the commercial and the industrial, the light flex, all those non-residential uses, we wanted to make sure that the contract had a blend of those and not one singular purpose. So what we did with them is set a minimum of what they might have to do in each of those categories. So you're, you're getting it, you're getting an, an 80/20 residential to non-residential project. But if you back out the, the 20% that's required for conservation, you could look at that as technically a 60/40 project. But in that 60 bucket of non-residential, or 80, depending on how you want to look at the conservation easement, we set minimums to guarantee that we would get some industrial, some light commercial, and, and some heavy commercial. We, we set minimums on those just to make sure they had to give us some of each of those. But if the market that they're after tells them this, this corner and this location is primed for light industrial, they still have to do at least 3% commercial. So they could take that entire 60 or 80%, depending how you want to look at it again, and do all of one, but they still have to give us some of the other. So we, the way we looked at this was, let them figure out what is the best market in the non-residential aspect, but still guarantee certain amounts. And I'm, I apologize if that is confusing, because I've heard several, several of you kind of pick up on the numbers aren't adding up and we're not. So we tried to insinuate, or, or put in here to show you that the residential has a maximum. They cannot go over 20%. The other ones are minimums so that we can guarantee certain uses.
And even with that being said, the residential seems a little high for me just personally. You know, I think the whole goal, the whole initiative, this property was commercial, flex space, light industrial, whatever you want to call it. You know, so I would personally would prefer to see that residential component. Honestly, I wish there was no residential component, but, you know, if it was somewhere near the 10%, I would probably feel a little more comfortable, but that's just me personally.
And, and we're, we're hearing you, Mr. Mayor, and like you mentioned, and we were here whispering to ourselves, this is going to go through the PUD process, which will go through the LPA, and then eventually to you guys. And I trust you when I tell you, everybody back here just heard what everybody up there is saying, and we're on timelines. Our offices are going to be under pressure, so we don't want to keep coming back and back and back. We want to get it right the first time. So we're, we're listening, and it's all about, you know, it's all comes down to math, you know, Excel, you know, modeling, and trying to get, trying to get it to all work properly so that it can be financed and built, and TRG does have a very strong portfolio, so that's not an issue, but you still have to do all that modeling. And, but again, we hear you, and we're paying a lot of attention to that.
Thank you. Councilmember Stanky?
Thank you. Yeah, I appreciate the word that you used when you were talking about the multifamily as using it as a buffer. You know, certainly, you know, someone that has a single-family home, they likely didn't buy that sitting right behind a warehouse, you know? And so with the thought that we could be bringing industrial, you know, in, into that area, to have that multifamily in the way, if you will, as a buffer, I, I think is, is a good idea for those residents that already have single-family homes to the north. So I certainly can appreciate that, but I also appreciate some mayor's comments that, you know, we, we need more commercial. And, and in, in my world, we need more hotel and conference space that's here. So, so I certainly agree with the mayor, but I, I also appreciate the, the multifamily as a buffer between, between the two. I'm just in his, his concerns, hopefully we can do as, as little as that as, as would be required to produce that buffer. Thanks.
Councilmember Hayden?
Yeah, I think an 80/20% split on a PUD project's, um...
It's pretty good. I also like what you said, as we look for affordable workforce housing in our community, having a component that fits that definition is important for our city, especially for people that may be working out there or working close to you. So I'm glad to hear, hear that part of it. So as far as the conservation areas, that stays restricted, correct?
Yes, sir.
Are, are there any plans for that particular area, or do you just leave it alone?
You can't, you can't touch it.
Right. But I mean, in terms of working with our conservation groups or, or other groups of, so that, that will just stay in place, fenced off?
Correct.
All right.
Not without the DEP sending really big fines.
Well, right, but, you know, I just wanted to make sure that there wasn't anything.
No, we can't use, we can't use it for stormwater or anything like that. It can't, it cannot be touched.
Okay. And then as far as speaking of what utilities are to that area, correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And one last question I have for you, since I don't see any other lights on. You heard me mention deed restrictions. Do you have any issues with that? If you could work with staff and come up with?
That's something we probably need to talk about offline, encumbering the land in perpetuity like that might be something that an office might have an issue with, but if we can, if we can work with city staff as we develop the PUD, it should serve its purpose. You guys then have ultimate control if, down the road.
Yes.
A new owner or, or TRG decides to change something, you can say no.
Right.
And I agree. I mean, it's, because it's a PUD process, it still gives us another bite of the apple here on the dice.
Deed restrictions are, they cause a lot of issues, especially with finance.
Financing is, yeah, that's a big issue, financing.
Okay. All right. Councilmember Long?
Yeah, just to follow up on that point, I think obviously that's something you guys are going to have to discuss, but there's a couple of different ways to achieve that without going straight to the deed as well. You're talking about clawback restrictions or performance bonds or something to that effect as well. So as long as that, you guys are open to that dialogue. And then just to kind of further elaborate, I think it's been pretty clear that we've got a desire to, to increase the commercial. I think based on you guys' elevations that you provided, that 3% minimum, I think it's, it's impossible to achieve, you know? I know that elevations are just that and renderings, but this complex that you're showing here is a little more than 3%, so you might inadvertently throw yourselves on that sword with regards to that 3% if, if your intent is to build more. I understand it's a minimum. And yes, certainly, obviously, we realize that we can't limit you to that now, but I think it's important that we engage in that dialogue so that you guys are aware when the PUD does come up. That's when it is going to be discussed. I would hate to not set expectations and then blindside you guys at that point when we're even further in the process, because I certainly understand that this has been, as stated by both sides, quite a journey. So transparency to me is important, so I want to make sure that you guys understand that that's our desire with regards to sort of marching orders to, to beef up the commercial if possible. I understand dollars are dollars, and, and there's certain data that shows you whether a project works or not, but City Cape Coral currently, and forever, has had a significant deficiency in commercial, and this is one of the last opportunities for a significant parcel to, to dig into some of that. So any consideration of that would be appreciated as you move forward.
Understood.
Thank you all.
Okay, I don't see any other comments, Mr. City Manager. You get the direction you're looking for.
We did. We will have some discussions with TRG about the 10 to 20% residential maximum and, and see if there's any willingness to adjust that before we bring you the contract.
Okay. Thank you, and appreciate the, your time and, and being here today.
Thank you. Thank you all.
I think we'll take a 10-minute break, come back at 11 o'clock.
I think we'll take a 10-minute break, come back at 11 o'clock.
... This is to discuss the procurement ordinance, specifically just a few items. One of them being the ones that, because Councilmember Long was tasked to work with, legal and finance procurement in reference to item, section 2-144J, Contracting for Goods and Services as a direct procurement authority. So I really got a little bit ahead of myself there. So the goal today is to provide changes always to streamline the procurement process. And there's going to be some updates and clarifications with some sections. And as you noticed, there's two slides. One has to do specifically with the direct procurement authority. And then there's another slide with a couple of other sections that had either been missed or it was an opportunity to have a discussion about as well. So the main item has to do with this specific section in reference to the RFP for city council to act as an alternate of the SAC procedure, the direct procurement authority. And this is our collective attempt to make sure where there's triggers and answer any questions of when and how council will be informed and determine when they will want to be part of the process. So the goal would be items like outsourcing city services, which will resort in a reduction of labor workforce. A majority of the city council approves via resolution removing the ranking of proposals from the administrative process and elect themselves as the SAC. City council initiates a request for proposal, or the city solicits proposal, or when the city receives unsolicited proposals. So I won't read everything verbatim. Our goal was to address any item that may come up that would impact the city as a whole that council may want to be part of it, or at least direct one way or the other. The next three section is standard of conduct for city officials and employee. And it was just housekeeping item of combining languages. When we read the ordinance, we realized that same things were mentioned in a couple of areas, so we combined them. The sale of surplus tangible personal property. There has been instances where there has been small dollar items that are either going to be donated to like a fire academy or to a school. And it would streamline the process if those dollar items, the small dollar items can just be administratively approved to be given or donated to these entities. And I believe in the ordinance, it's around $10,000 threshold. And also the sale of surplus of real property. When we try to think of every single word in reference to how to address it, one word that had not been addressed was scrap. So if you look at your summary of items on the last page, scrap is just defined as part of the surplus or methodology to be able and what to do and how to do about it. Sometimes something can just be scrapped or thrown away, or we may get some monetary small compensation, and we wanted to make sure that we were in compliance to do that. In a nutshell, that's pretty much the presentation. We're open to any questions or any comments.
Can you talk a little more about the surplus property?
Oh, absolutely, yes. In the ordinance, it would be a brand-new item. Right now, the disposal methods, there's six methods right now. I'm going to go to 2-154. Okay, so whenever something's going to be declared surplus, it is addressed administratively, and it has to be categorized as excess... No repairable worthless. Once that happens, then we have to dispose of it. And currently, there's six different methodologies how to dispose of it. One of them is auctioning it off. There are times, there's donations, there are trading, transferred to another department, and now we're adding scrap. Plus, we're requesting for underdonation is the only item currently that any dollar value could be $10, $15, as long as there's dollar value with a good... It would have to be brought to council for council to approve the donation to whichever entity we're going to donate it to.
And then the big thing was the sale of surplus real property is what I was really talking about.
That's correct. It's real property.
Okay.
You mean, you're talking about dirt?
Correct, the real property in reference to, it would have to be come to council.
2-155?
Correct. There is...
And what's the change there compared to what we were doing in the past?
The change there is that administratively, and I'm looking at the ordinance itself. If you go to...
Do you happen to have available to you the slide that shows the changes? Just to kind of bring it up so that when we're discussing these things, we can kind of look at the line items?
Absolutely.
While we're doing that, if you don't mind, I think I could address the mayor's questions because I was the one that kind of brought that up. It wasn't something that we had discussed previously. But inasmuch as we were at the table in these discussions, a situation had arose where I was made aware that there was an offer that was made by a member of the public to purchase from the city some real property that we had owned that we had yet to declare surplus. And the way that the current code is written is that the city manager has the unilateral discretion to, because it was not declared surplus, either consider that or reject that without any involvement in the city council. And so, you know, in fact, when I reached out to him, when I was made aware that this offer was made and it had been a week or so, I had spoken to the city manager, and as was the standard procedure. So there was certainly nothing wrong doing on his part. He had already prepared a letter of rejection for an offer that was, you know, several million dollars. And so to me, that just seems like there should be a mechanism built in that city council is brought in when an offer is made of that magnitude regarding assets that the city owns. And so after discussing with procurement and the city attorney's office, the way that it was currently written was because we had not yet declared a surplus that it did not initiate the mechanism that obligated the city manager to bring that forth. So what we're doing here, or what we tried to do here in this language, which is again, the section 2-155, is basically requiring a disclosure to a certain effect from the city manager, regardless of whether that property's been declared surplus or not. city manager regardless of whether that property's been declared surplus or not to council, who would then make a decision as to whether or not they would advise staff to move forward and maybe fleshen that out a little bit, or in turn rejecting that offer. So that was the intent.
All right. I appreciate that clarification. Thank you. That's all the questions I had. Councilmember Long, you were next up.
That was me. Thank you.
Councilmember Hayden?
Yeah, I wondered, or Keith, maybe just a word usage thing under 2A, outsourcing city services, it says which will result in a reduction of workforce. Are we saying that if we know, it's because this council's made it pretty clear that if we were privatizing or outsourcing anything, that we didn't want anybody to lose their job? So I'm trying to understand the language here. Is it, if we're outsourcing something that according to this, we know will result in a reduction of workforce, that it will come before us? Or should that word be "could" result instead of "will" result in a reduction of workforce? I'm concerned about the language there, because we're implying that future outsourcing will result in a reduction of workforce.
I think the intent is that any services that will be outsourced, be brought to city council. So we could work on the language with legal, either which may...
Yeah, I...
I think the intent...
What will result, I think, is, you know, I think it's going to make some people skittish.
It could be a "may," it could be, because normally, to your point, as you stated, the city always tries to move individuals to other areas, but the intent is that if it's going to be outsourced, city council needs to determine, do they want to be part of it or not?
We could just maybe look at that language.
We'll work with legal to kind of clear the language.
Yeah, that makes sense. I think it's important in further discussions that this was sort of a shotgun approach to make sure that, based on the collective discussions of city council, that there wasn't anything that fell through the cracks with regards to what we kind of had a notification on with regards to whether we wanted to involve ourselves in that process or not. So absolutely, I agree that, you know, a little bit more limiting language or less limiting language broadens that even further. Thank you.
Mr. City Manager?
Sorry. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to discuss the two items. That was one of them, was to indicate that the preface to all of these items, when council may serve as the SAC, it suggests in the header to those categories that council may elect to do that. So certainly, if council gives guidance to administration to look at outsourcing some particular portion of our government, or we're looking to do that, you don't, it's not resulting in that you will. You can say this one is not of a significant enough nature that you all want to serve as it. But I understand your concern, Councilmember Hayden, that, you know, it could result in... Yeah. So, but I just wanted to make sure that it's still discretionary. You still have the, you still have the option to make that decision before the decision or the interviews even take place. And then the next part that I want to do, just chat about, also related to the one the mayor brought up, which is on the disposition of surplus real property. There is an "or" in how the offers would be communicated. It says either in writing within 10 days of the receipt, or at the next regular council, regularly scheduled council meeting. The only thing that I just want, I want to just talk about practical situations that we may be put in. We may receive an offer on a Tuesday afternoon. The next meeting is on Wednesday, and by the time it makes its way to my office, or, I mean, it may be that their meetings happen before the 10 days, and I just want you all to be aware that, you know, there needs to be some understanding of the way this stuff will flow. Otherwise, we could be setting up a situation where maybe not me, but a future city manager or somebody in administration is still compliant, but the expectation is, hey, you should have brought it to us at a meeting. You had it on a Tuesday. You know, you waited, you know, eight days or till Friday to get it to us. I just want you to see that that's just a minor thing that I see, but I want us to be aware of it now, because inevitably, it's going to happen. We'll get an offer right before a meeting. It's not going to be brought up at the meeting, but transmitted later. And I just want you all to be aware of that.
Something as simple as comma, whichever is less would alleviate that issue, I think, so that if there was some scheduling conflicts with the next meeting that were longer than 10 days, you would then be...
Well, whichever is less would mean if the organization got it on a Tuesday.
Oh, that's true.
But I didn't know about it.
It would encapsulate a Wednesday meeting.
Yeah. So I just would like it to be clear that both are appropriate. Obviously, it's not going to be any intent to delay. Obviously, the point of this is to make sure that we're conveying you the offers. I just didn't want there to be a, you know, pulling of strings over, you know, a couple of days due to the organizational having, you know, having to process stuff.
Okay, Councilmember Welsh?
Yeah, I think the way that it's written, you know, at the next council meeting or 10 days, I think if you get it on a Tuesday, it seems to me that you'll have 10 days to kind of put it together. So I don't see that being an issue with the way it's written or anything to change on that. And I do think that that is a good addition to this, because whether or not a property the city owns is declared surplus or not, if a private party wants to purchase it and they have an idea for that property, I think it should come before council and not just be the sole responsibility of the city manager, because we're looking at it as a collective body of the citizens who own the property. So I agree with everything, the changes. I think you did good, Keith, and staff on this, and I support it. Thank you.
Councilmember Steinecke?
Thank you. Just as it relates to land purchases and offers for land, in many circumstances, it has to be understood that some owners require longer to get back on offers than others. And so if someone's looking to acquire city property, then there just needs to be an understanding that it may not happen. When the offer says we want a response in three days, well, that may be unreasonable. We can't get you an answer in three days. So as long as we can set an expectation, like Councilmember Welsh says, that, you know, in a certain amount of time, we can get back to you, but, and so keep that in mind in your offers, is that, you know, the answering party may not be able to look at this offer until such and such a date. And that happens in a variety of different realms in land acquisition, that different parties need longer to get back on the offer than others. So I think just set a reasonable expectation of when it would get back, so that it could get in front of city council. Thanks.
I don't see Councilmember Long?
Yeah, just to follow up, if I could, that wasn't the nature of it. I think that the timeline with the 10 days is to notify us rather than to get back to the individuals. There's no obligation, as it's written here, that we respond at all. It was just that the obligation that the city manager had conveyed the offer to city council. It didn't inherently include any desire or obligation of the council to then turn it around the next amount of time. Maybe that's something that we would consider, but as it's written, the intent was just to pass along the information that an offer had been submitted. Thank you.
Yeah, I think if you, you know, you review some of the changes, I think it shows that we're just trying to make sure that council, whether it's this council or any future council, you know, gets the information and is aware of it, and can move forward collectively as a body in how they want to move forward with that particular offer. So anytime, I think that you can have additional communication between the city manager and the council, no matter who those parties are, it's only going to be a better scenario, in my opinion. Councilmember Welsh?
Yeah, just one more thing, since we're on the sale of surplus tangible property, and only because we went through this a couple of months ago with the, you know, famous Cape Coral clock, and how that was damaged and scrapped, but then went up for sale. Is this the ordinance where if we wanted to put anything for historical significant value, be like a first right of refusal to the historical society or anything deemed like that? Is this the ordinance we would add that to?
My understanding, we already have an ordinance in place that defines what we have to do there.
That's the donation section. So if you want to talk about the donation?
The donation section right now, the change that's being requested is to state for any surplus over $5,000, less than $5,000, to authorize administratively to, you know, give to the entity, any entity. Anything over that, it would have to come to the city council.
Okay, but is there anything in here specific to anything of historical reference that would go, and do we want to put that in there at this time, since we're reviewing this ordinance, knowing the feedback we got from residents and how it kind of blew up as, you know, as a discussion? Does anybody else think that it's important to add maybe an eighth, you know, line item in here that says, you know, historical value to the city can go to whoever? So I'm just, I'm asking the rest of council what their thoughts on that is. And if not, then I'm okay with the way it is, but just since we're here and we've got it open. Thank you.
Yeah, I think for me, the way it's written now is fine. For me personally, I know when, you know, we do have a ordinance for properties that have been identified as historical, or if they want to be identified as historical. There's a process already in place for hearings, if that's what you're talking about. That's, so I think that's something totally separate. There is a mechanism in place already to address that through another ordinance.
Okay. Yeah, just seeing that it was open, I figured we had a discussion on it, but if it's already there, then you don't, the city manager's shaking his head.
I think we're cross-talking here. So what Councilmember Welsh is asking, if we have a, an item that is considered a historical or, you know, cultural...
Significant.
Yeah, artifact of significance, rather than just scrapping it or selling it on the open market, he's asking if in that section, should we have some type of first right of refusal, or some type of ability for staff to basically go and give that to the historical society, and so that they can preserve it first, before we entertain any of the other options such as scrap, surplus disposition, or sale?
Councilmember Long?
Yeah, my only concern about that is kind of going down the rabbit hole of who's the arbiter of historical significance? Is staff going to be obligated to make that determination? Because, you know, who's the antiquities dealer on staff that's going to decide that this is historical and this isn't? It's my understanding that the clock was not, did not officially designate any sort of classification. I'm sure there's certain members of the public that have held that out to be historic. So that just creates more issues that would be a lot more than one line item. I appreciate the idea, but as far as moving this thing forward, I think that this encapsulates the intent that we had set forth. If you recall, this has already been delayed several months from the original intent. So the longer that we kick this out for issues like that, the longer that essential things get caught in the crosshairs. I think the last discussion that we had kind of encapsulated some of the issues that we've got in the RFP process. So I would prefer to move forward with this and get it put out there to avoid situations like that moving forward.
Yeah, me personally, I like the dollar amount approach, and that's pretty well-defined. Anything over 5,000 is coming to us. If it's below 5,000, you have the opportunity to, you know, to disperse of whatever, whatever the property, whether it's historic or not. So, Councilmember Welsh, you have a follow-up to that?
Yeah, now that I'm reading through it, and I see the $5,000 mark, that, you know, obviously, if it's a clock that's scrapped, it's not worth 5,000. And if, I would hope the city manager then would realize the significance of it and take that upon himself to handle that, and doesn't have to be handled at our level.
Right.
But I do, I do agree that 5,000 seems like a good number for something like that. So just, it was a poppin' thought, and thanks for the conversation.
Okay. Any other discussion? Get to the direction you were looking for, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, thank you.
All right. Let's move on to item 4, Quarterly Grant Management Report. Looks like we have Mr. Mason.
Yes, sir. Be with you in just a second. We have to switch over. Thank you. Sir, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, Mark Mason, financial services director. Quick report on grants over the last quarter, or the third quarter fiscal year '23. We have five pending awards right now from the third quarter as of July 31. I saw a correction June 30, 2023. Five, four of those are from the General Appropriations Act that just occurred, and the reason why they're pending is because we don't have the contracts yet, so they're not available to spend on. Until we have the contracts, we come back through, we have you all approve the contracts and accept the awards, then they're not active. We also have a State of Florida grant for information technology that is also pending right now, waiting for the contract. During the third quarter, we also applied for seven grants. Several of those were with DOT, for, two of them were for EV charging infrastructure grants, as well as a athletic field lights grant from the Department of Energy. State, we have some JAG grants, as well as a Art Center renovations grant from the State of Florida for Parks and Recreation. And we also received a local grant of about $20,000 for the Police Department for pedestrian and bikeways enforcement. In addition, we have six grants that were awarded during the quarter. Four of those were for sidewalks, approximately $860,000. Also with the Police Department, we were awarded a JAG grant for gas masks, and one local grant, South Florida Water Management District, a little over $2.2 million for the Kaluza Hachi Connect Project. Overall, we have 76 active grants, total awarded $124.8 million with, available to draw to date, $47 million. Overall, we have a number of grants per department, 12 grants with development services. We have eight grants with fire. Police Department has 12 active grants currently, with Parks and Recreation having approximately, having 10 active grants. Public Works has a sizable number of grants, mostly all of them are which are associated with the sidewalks. We do have a number, two right now, Arbor Day or Tree Distribution Grants as well. Utilities has a number of grants. Most of these are associated with the River Crossing Project. We also have the American, the ARPA grant as well, at $25 million, one of which is for the Pine Tree, as well as the MPS or the Master Pump Station 100 Project. And we'll be also doing another one for the Master Pump Station in the north. 13 grants overall awarded and in process. With the FEMA, we have four active grants right now. We just submitted two additional ones for reimbursement. Those will take time to work through the process, and we'll be actively submitting new grants regularly for FEMA reimbursement for much of the work that we have, either in process or have already worked on with debris, as well as forced account labor, et cetera. And that's it for this quarter. Till the next one.
Real quick question, since you mentioned it. Mr. Mason, the ARPA grant of $25 million, I can't remember exactly the dollar amount for that particular project, 20...
25 million.
So the whole, will eat up that whole grant with that particular project?
We will, with two projects. We'll eat it up with the project for the, for the line extension, as well as the Master Pump Station 100 in the southern end of the city, as well as Master Pumps Station 730? 720. Well, that's close. 720 up north.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Thank you, sir, for the update.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to Quarterly Parks Gobon Report.
Thank you. Paul Klingon, Director of Capital Improvements. Here's a quick summary of where we are with the parks. Giafrida Park and Del Prado Park are open. We don't anticipate any additional amenities or landscaping, but I'll get in details on all the other parks. All right, Gator Trails substantially complete. There is, that was under budget, and you'll see a theme here, that at the summer retreat, there was a request to evaluate each of the parks for additional trees, sod and irrigation. So we're in that process. So as part of, as in Gator, we still in the process of replacing the trees damaged by Hurricane Ian, looking at shade over existing benches and the exercise equipment, as well as evaluating... as well as evaluating whether or not additional trees, sod or irrigations required here. Cultural, that's substantially complete. That was under budget. Additional scope in process, install perimeter sidewalks, that's completed. There was 60 new trees and vegetation added as part of the Arbor Day Foundation Grant, that's completed. In the process of replacing trees damaged by Hurricane Ian, that would add an additional 30 trees related to the requirement of some of the existing trees that were cut down as far as the permit and what we had to replace. Shade over some of the existing benches, adding exercise equipment. Public Works is in the process of curbing and landscaping the three medians. And again, looking at cultural, that cost, that evaluation of additional trees, sod and irrigation. Sands Park, there's a soft opening. We haven't had the ribbon cutting. Things certainly have improved since the rainy season, the grass coming in, but there's still some things that we're looking at. And certainly, again, at that park, evaluating, I won't repeat it, but evaluating everything that was discussed at the summer retreat. We are substantially complete there. Joe Cove Yellow, we're anticipating substantial completion in August and evaluating for the additional amenities, trees sod and required irrigation. Yellow Fever Creek is approximately 40% complete. And that completion is scheduled for November of 2023. Right now, we're on budget. Again, looking at the additional trees, et cetera, et cetera. Lake Kennedy, that's 25% complete. If you go out there, I was there yesterday. Utilities are done. So everything underground is done. So that's about 25% complete. Now they're coming out of the ground. And right now, certainly that's on budget, but again, we're doing that evaluation the value of adding additional landscaping. Crystal Lake Park, that's going to bid this month. It's in with procurement for final reviews. And we are again looking at the additional landscaping and based on costs and things to possibly get that in by an amendment, an addendum, sorry, to the bid. Festival Park, proposed bidding in August. The base bid for that is the four fields and we have a bid added up to 10 fields. You can see the duration and evaluating the landscaping. Lake Mead Park, that's proposed bidding in August. We have all the permits, contract duration 420 days. Looking at that, again, for that additional landscaping. And with the ones that we're bidding, certainly we can do that with bid additives. Tropicana Park, we're waiting on the Army Corps, sorry, the Army Corps and South Water, Water Management District permits. And I'll check my notes here, is with the Army Corps, we're waiting on the NMFS permit from, from them for the Army Corps to approve in South Water, Water Management District. The last submittal we did is due and they have to report back by the end of July. So I think we're close here, hopefully with the permitting on these two. The Eagle Nest take permit is pending, so we should get that in the, in the next few months. And again, we're evaluating for additional landscaping. All right, the Yacht Club, things are on hold as far as the, certainly the GMP at this point. The Boathouse opened on July 10th. I want to thank Public Works and Parks for getting the area ready for the Boathouse opening, the beach opening. So if you go down there now, they're in the process, Public Works is coordinating. And the, the bathroom and the two pavilions are being torn down, so that should be completed in the next couple of weeks. And we're in the process with Public Works Environmental Resources Division on getting the permits through DP and the Army Corps. Then also as far as the deconstruction and of the ballroom and demolition of the remaining buildings, Kimley Horn is preparing plans for bidding. The city manager's office with Parks and Rec, we're going to, going to get that stakeholders group together. And that's something we're proposing to meet with them in August. And then once we have that information on the deconstruction of the ballroom, that will be incorporated. And then hopefully out to bid in September for the demolition. And then Kimley Horn is working on the master plan and they'll be getting back with us at a time to meet with council on the concepts, if you recall. They had the concept A and E and there was a combination, so they're taking a look at that and coming up with that combined concept to bring back.
Any timeline on that, when, when we might think that will be? Further discussions with Kimley Horn?
They needed, they're thinking they might be ready in September to bring back something of that combined, something a little more than just the bubble. Any questions?
Councilmember Steinke.
Thank you. Just a quick question, and excuse my ignorance, but at the, at the Yacht Club, as it relates to the beach opening, is a permit required for us to find debris on the bottom of, of, of the, the sand under the water to make it safe for people to go into the water? Do we have to wait for a permit for that or are we able to do that right away?
Okay, that's something Public Works Environmental Resources actually was, this week was talking with DP. And as far as mechanical raking of the Upland Beach, we could, we could do that. And then in the water, we cannot do mechanical. It would have to be by hand. And that's something we can move forward with. It's the beach sand, putting that down where we need the permit for the land side. And they said that because of the small two sawfish, it's very unlikely we'd get a permit to put anything in the water side. But we're still going to look into, but that might be months, if not years out. That's a longer process. So the short answer is yes, we can go in and start raking, you know, mechanical means on the land side. In the water, it's more manual, which we've got to make, you know, it's harder to do. And we can certainly get the permits, working on the permits on the land side beach for the sand.
Do we have, do we have the technology or the facility to use sonar to identify the composition of the bottom there? To identify things that need to be removed, if they could be removed by hand?
Well, I suppose with, we could look into that as far as, you know, we have bathymetric and whether or not that would pick anything up. But the plan is we'd most likely have to get scuba divers in there and try to, try to locate the stuff. But that's something we'll, we haven't checked, but we can.
Okay.
But, yeah, I don't know how much debris is in there. Certainly would want to try to remove it all. But there's still going to be things that may be missed. That's where we talked about putting up signs, like in any beach, things might float and wash up during storm events.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Shepherd?
Yes, I've had a lot of citizens reach out to me and they, they, they wonder why the beach isn't open. They think we just got to go out there with rakes and just clean up like they clean their yard. And so I, I took a, a ride out there, stayed in my vehicle, just drove by to get a, a look. And I can see that there's a lot of, a lot of damage, a lot of debris being removed. Is it true to say, I mean, I don't know if I'm correct, it appeared to me that we lost a dramatic amount of beach. Like what we had before and what's left is dramatically different. I don't think the public realizes that. It seems like we've lost a tremendous amount of sand and beach that just doesn't even exist anymore.
That is correct. We have lost some of the beach, yes.
Okay. Yeah, well, I'm, I'm glad I brought that up because I think a lot of citizens just think it's as simple as going out and raking the sand and then letting people go and use it. But it's a lot more than that. The damage is very extensive. Thank you.
Councilmember Hayden?
Paul or Mike, can you be a little more specific? There's been a lot of dates thrown around of when the deconstruction or the demo might begin, whether it's September, October. Be a little bit more specific on the timeline. You say is preparing plans for bidding. Do we know when those plans will be prepared and when the bidding will begin?
Well, we had anticipated the bidding probably starting sooner, but because we want to get the stakeholders together, the plan is to get that group together for the, the deconstruction of the ballroom. That would be in August. Then that information will be incorporated and then out to bid in September. And then it's usually on the street for a month. Then you have bid opening and then the actual notice to proceed.
All right. So it sounds like we'll probably wait past October.
Well, again, yes, adding that, the input from the stakeholders kind of pushed it back a month, so it could go into November.
Okay. So when you say getting the stakeholders together in August, are we thinking the beginning of August, the middle? I mean, it's a, it's a long month and, you know, I'm sure this group would like to get together and hear what's, what's happening. So are we thinking the beginning of the month or when?
I'll defer to the city manager was going to kind of work with Parks and get that team to get that stakeholders group together.
So the way we're looking at this is Parks has a, a group of staff that they want to walk through the building to, to basically look at anything that the city needs to salvage for other operations or programming. We're going to get that group in there first or second week of August. Same time, we're looking at building the supplemental crew or, or citizens, you know, to, that would go in there and look at stuff from a historical nature and things they would want to preserve. We'll identify those items, discuss them with the, with Kimley Horn. Obviously, some of these items, if it's, for example, a chandelier, might be as simple as just disconnecting the chandelier and it's not much involved. But if there's other things that are more, more extensive, obviously those would have impacts on the, on the cost. So what we intend on doing is generating a list and putting that list in the bid for the demolition, deconstructive preservation. So basically have one base bid that says, here's the raising of the building, but then to deconstruct it and preserve items, here's the other items. And then they, the, the contractor would be able to supply us with the bid amounts to, to perform each of those actions. So if, you know, the beams obviously are one that, that keeps coming recurring, you know, that could be, you know, an extra $50,000 on the, on the total cost. But we would, we're, we would ask for that so that we can then have a collective decision when we go to issue the, the award on exactly what we want.
So since this seems to be driven by the stakeholder meeting, is there a way in the next two weeks that, you know, providing we've set a date for that, that we can get a more definitive timeline? So we're going to meet with the stakeholders on this day. 20, 20 days later, we're going to do this. 30 days later, we're going to do this. And if we identify the people, they're going to be in the stakeholder group.
I'll take the last question first, which is have we identified the people? No, because we've not put out a call of offers for, you know, people to join the group yet. So that has, what has happened is the first part, Paul and I have had a discussion about getting, from Kimley Horn, a more refined timeline that would take us through the bidding. That would include the parks review, the stakeholder review, the bid specification, writing of how to, how to preserve those or what we want preserved to bidding. So that, that is underway. As soon as we have that, then I'll be able to review it and release a more accurate timeline with all those little steps in between, as well as put out to the community. You know, we're looking for, you know, a dozen or so people to, to kind of walk through.
And back to my first question, can we get that in the next two weeks?
Get the timeline?
Yeah.
Oh, sure. And it's contingent upon that, that meeting with the stakeholders group.
I would think we could be able to set that up in the.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
We're, we're working on it. I, I don't know the timeline, but if, if he thinks we can do it, yeah, we can have it by August.
Yeah, we can get the timeline, sure, in a couple of weeks.
All right. Thank you.
In my understanding, the stakeholders group, they're going to identify what, if any, other property in the building that we're trying to save.
Correct. And.
And once we identify that, then we'll have to identify what the cost is, maybe through Kimley Horn.
Well, the way I see this playing out is that they, they generate a list of the things they think would be valuable to the community to preserve. I, I don't believe that it's the council's desire to delegate that responsibility because there will be costs involved with that. I, I think what we've always discussed is have them generate a list of the things that they think will add value. We're certainly going to have things that the architect already is considering that has value to incorporate into the, into the new building to, to kind of bring forward some of the history or some of the architectural feel. What I, what I envision is coming, getting the list from, from this group and then incorporating that into the bid for the deconstructive preservation. So we'll have, let's say they pick up 20 items and they say, well, the fireplace is one, the chandeliers are one, the wall sconces are, are one, and the beams are one. So let's just go with those four. We'll have those four added to the bid specifications for the deconstructive preservation. So we'll have a base bid of just basically take it down. Okay? Then you'll have base bid plus alternate one, which is, hey, save us the, the wall sconces. Base bid plus wall sconces and chandeliers. And so we'll, we'll have the actual cost and at some, we could even, if you want to do a, do a kind of a cow to say, you know, how much, how much do we want to put forward to that? Do we want to, is, is it so minimal? We just want to award it all? At some point, we're going to have to get to a, a point of reconciliation between what this group would like to see preserved and, and what the council and community are willing to, to pay for.
Okay. Councilmember Shepherd?
Yes, just wanted to add that when I went out there, I, I literally stared at the building for about 30 minutes because I understand, you know, how a lot of people feel about the history and, and that are very passionate about saving the building. But we know the possibilities. So what I was saying to myself is, is what is there to save and what are people really going to go to their museum to look at? I think what people are really trying to hold on to is the memories. So to give an idea to the people of that group, if they're listening, is maybe have like something similar to what we do in a ribbon cutting, where we have a, a sending off event where people can bring their memories, their pictures, their photographs, their, you know, things of the past that happened there, any history. Have them, get like a production company to create a video and have like a sending off farewell and then a celebration of, of the new. It's just an idea, but I think if something like that was created, it would have something for people to see at the museum. Rather than a beam or a chandelier, I'm not the one that's going to make that decision, but it was just a thought to create some kind of sending off, some kind of video that shows the history. And maybe all these people that are passionate about it, that have all these memories could, could donate memories for this video to create a, a story. So it's just some input I wanted to give. Thank you.
Councilmember Steinke.
Thank you, Paul. I just want to reflect on one of the other things that you, you had mentioned as it relates to putting together a couple of different concepts into a more blended concept as to how the yacht club would, would be reconstructed, if you will. And there's, there's been some talk out in the public and I just want this, just on the record. There's been talk out there that we're running down the road already with a P3 concept for the yacht club. And, and the way it was stated was that this, all this conversation is happening kind of behind the scenes at council. And my initial reaction to that was, man, I must be missing out on this because I, I haven't been involved in any of those conversations. The whole thought of, of the potential of, of a P3, as I remember it, was simply brought up. it, was simply brought up as a component part of, of a potential concept for the yacht club back in January at our, at our winter retreat, was the thought that that could be something that was considered. For the record, is anything going, running down the road where some, we're already out there looking for a P3 relationship and it's on the street for interested parties?
No, and, and so I've had several conversations with members of the community and even some with council regarding a P3 insinuation. What has been discussed is the potential of having P3s, operators who will run certain parts of the, of the facility at a later date. At this time, it's premature. We don't even know what's going in the center donut. We don't even know. I mean, we're, we're just, council's just approving the contract to have Kimley Horn go back, bring forward the ideas that, that were discussed in the January retreat. So at some point in this process, you know, once we figure out what we're going to do there, those discussions will be appropriate. To discuss them now is completely premature.
Thank you.
So it's, we have nothing in the works. There is no solicitations, but it is, it is a discussion that will need to happen, but we, first, we need to know what is going there. Because then we'll, we can figure out what to solicit, if anything. But right now, it's just premature.
Great. Thank you for confirming that.
Councilmember Welsh.
Thank you. When it comes to the stakeholder group that's gonna go in to the yacht club, I'm sure you've been here quite a long time, Mr. City Manager, and you know extensive families that have been here equally as long. So I'm just gonna offer up, if you have any, any need for thoughts of, of putting that stakeholder group together, I've got a few people. So before you go and put that out there and get it going, I would like to have a, in maybe one of our one-on-one meetings, talk to you about a couple of people. I think that would be a good fit for that group. So just keep that in mind for our next meeting.
Will do. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Oh, I was, I was saying, we'll do. We'll talk about it the next meeting. The current, if, if I may, just take a couple of minutes to discuss the thoughts. So what, what the current thought of the, of this little stakeholder group of people that would be interested in going through items would be to look at people in, basically in 10-year segments. So we would have basically somebody that's been here for 70 years, somebody that's been here for 60 years, 50 years, 40 years, 30 years, 20 years, 10 years. And then try to also get a cross-generational, you know, like starting with somebody who's on the, the youth council, somebody that's in their 20s, in their 30s, in their 40s. And so if we can establish that, we would put out kind of a, a call for offers for people that want to come on, have them kind of select, I'm a 50-year employee, I've also, you know, and then we can then have basically a system that, that pulls one from each group. We're, just to be candid, we're not gonna be able to accommodate everybody that wants to be a part of this, right? I mean, that, there'd be thousands. And so the, the idea here is to, to try to get a, a good cross-generational and, and, and people that have been in the community for, you know, a small amount of time, as well as people that have been in the community, you know, since, since before it was even a city. And kind of bring all those people together and say, all right, we're gonna do a, do a walkthrough and, you know, figure out what, what do you think is important, what is not. You know, I've, I've been through the building with, with several, several of you all. It's, since it's been cleaned out, you know, there, there's not a lot, a lot left in there, you know. So I think like tables and flowers and, you know, a lot of that stuff isn't there. So you're down to basically cabinets, flooring, roofing. So I, I think even once they get in there, there might be a little bit of a different direction they go, but we'll see.
Thank you. Okay. Turn it back over to you, Mr. Klingon. Oh, did you have another one? I'm sorry.
Real quick, Councilmember Stanky, good point. There's a lot of discussion, conversation going on out there. Nothing's been, nothing's been decided yet. Councilmember Shepherd, I think the intent for any of the bigger pieces that are in the yacht club is, can the beams be incorporated in any new design that might, might go into any new facility out there? The history museum is probably not gonna want the beams. They wouldn't have any place to put them up there. You know, chandeliers, I haven't heard a lot of interest in that. There might be some other things in there that could go in the history museum. But, you know, as far as the bigger items, for me anyway, it was looking at the new design and memorializing the current structure and how it can be remembered and putting that in there. But, you know, we, we know because of social media that a lot of conversations are happening out of our control. And so that's why it's important for me to get this timeline established so we can bring a little more focus to this project going forward. Thanks.
That was it for Parks.
Okay. Any other discussion on that topic, Mr. City Manager?
No, sir.
All right. Seeing no other lights, we'll move on to item six, quarterly capital improvement report. It looks like we have three different areas, so we'll start with 6A first, CIP, capital improvement, project update.
Thank you. For the record, Paul Kling, Director of Capital Improvements. All right, as you've seen this slide before, Capital Improvements is responsible for the UEP, Parks, Go Bonn, Yacht Club, major city facilities and miscellaneous projects. All right, so we're in construction. You probably haven't seen any ground moving yet, but, any digging. But in June 2023, we gave all the contracts, notice to proceed, but there's a few months that's involved with sharp drawing reviews, purchasing materials and mobilization. So I'd say in the next few months, you'll see more activity, actual activity going on. The east, North One East is, we're about 95% complete on the design and permitting for that. North Three. In just last week, July 11th, the SAC selected McKimmon Creed for design permitting and bidding. So we have to negotiate that fee with them and then we'll be coming back to council for approval of that company to do the design work and permitting. Fire Station 13, that is under construction. There's a rendering there to the left and we're about 15% complete on construction and starting to come out of the ground. Fire Training Facility, council approved that to move forward in May. Notice to proceed was given in July. And there is a groundbreaking on July 26th. You should have gotten your invites for that. Police Training Facility, council approved in June and we should be giving notice to proceed in July or August to start that project. New Fleet Facility. At the last retreat, council, majority of council wanted to move forward with the 40 maintenance bays for that 2070 buildout. Just to remind everybody that's, it's the North Cape Government Complex. We own the land. The zoning's in place and now we're presently negotiating design and permitting fees with the Weston Sampson for that. Facilities Master Plan. The tent of that is, you know, to provide adequate and efficient workspace for employees. That's about 50% complete. STANTEC just had a meeting with all the departments to discuss their space needs and come forward with what we'll need over the next, you know, 10, 20, 25 years as far as growth and the number of office space we will need. Bridge Rehab, that's 100% complete as far as the, the study and we will be coming back to, to council to, to, you know, have a detailed discussion on bridges. Similar with the wares, Public Works and Utilities is putting money aside to take care of the wares. Utilities already in the process of doing some of the wares. Same idea there, prioritizing those, coming back to council at a future cow with an update of the plan for the wares. JC Park Improvements. Right now, there's pre-design tasks. Again, this is still conceptual. Whatever the final concept is, you still have to move forward with the, the pre-designs. There's a boundary and topographic surveys, species survey, wetland determination, if there is any bathometric data collection in the water for possible dock slips, and then the coastal assessment. And right now, with Panini, they're preparing a video for the concept for presentation at neighborhood meetings. And we're anticipating possibly in August, having that first neighborhood meeting. DND Boat Ramp. So that got to a point where it's 60% complete. That is now, we're starting that up again. So AECOM is proceeding with the 90% plans. The site will be permitted through Lee County as far as the requirements for that design. Fire Station 10 and the Public Safety Annex that we're presently negotiating with BSSW Architects and will be coming back to council with that for approval. Oasis Multipurpose Athletic Field. In July, we selected Avalon Engineering for design and permitting. So again, we have to negotiate that fee with design elements right there. Right now proposed are the football, soccer, lacrosse fields, the multipurpose running track, bleachers, locker rooms, pavilions, concession facility and restrooms. Skate Park Building Replacement. Tomorrow, we should be getting the RFPs for design and permitting on that project. Some of the design elements in there are listed with the size and what's proposed there for the skate park building replacement. And DeLugeur Boulevard, that's something, in May, we selected Johnson Engineering. So we're going through the negotiations for that design. There is that parcel one that we're still working with that owner as far as getting the right of way from them for the extension where they still own the remainder of the parcel. And some miscellaneous capital improvement projects. Sierra Vista Restroom is wrapping up. That's with the one where we got the TDC grant of 406, almost 407,000. That should be completed in August. The Bernstor Road, boat ramp sewer improvements, that's been completed. And we continue to provide technical support for the self-spreader waterway, environmental improvement and sustainability program permit. Any questions?
You have any questions? Okay. Thank you very much for the update.
All right. Thank you.
As we'll move on to 6B Utilities. Mr. Pearson.
All right. Good morning. Jeff Pearson, Utilities Director. The first project I'd like to talk about is the Fort Myers reclaimed water transmission main. I'm pleased to report that the world record horizontal directional drill under the river was completed this past month. And we, both projects are presently under budget. We anticipate substantial completion on or before the end of this year. I can also tell you, we, the only things we have left are the work at the Everest Water Reclamation Facility, putting together the manifold system, valves, and then we're going to be putting in a pressure tank at Horton Park. And once those are completed and the city of Fort Myers improvements are completed, we'll be turning that on before the end of the year. The next project is the reservoir, pipeline and pump station. We have 100% design plans. We are currently doing a Phase Two environmental assessment, site assessment of that property. We've already completed a Phase One, which indicated we needed to go ahead and move forward with a Phase Two. We are also in the process of getting two appraisals for that site. And we anticipate having everything ready to go and start talking with the owner next month. And if all goes well, we anticipate we should be able to have that project online in 2025. Next project is the CRA Master Pump Station 100 and Force Main. The Force Main will be completed by November of this year. We're on schedule and on budget. The Master Pump Station 100 project was awarded to TLC. It's a construction firm and we've issued a limited notice to proceed. They're in the process of purchasing all the materials to begin construction on that in the coming months. And we anticipate completing that construction late next year. Next project is the Palm Tree Water and Force Main Improvements Project. That project is on schedule, under budget and will be completed this November. The next project is the North RO Plant Supply Wells. This project is currently in design. It's on schedule, on budget. Our next steps are, we're acquiring, continue to acquire additional well parcels. You've probably seen some of those recently coming forward at council. Once we complete the engineering design for each of those parcels, we'll begin to bid each well and any necessary raw water mains and construct those wells and raw water mains. And once we get further in, we'll have firm dates. Next project is the Pine Island Road West Corridor Utilities. We've issued an RFP for design. That has come to the SAC. And we're hopefully going to initiate design in the next couple of months and complete the design late to mid next year. And I'd like to go over some projects that we've completed. One is the Pine Island Road reclaimed water tanks and booster station. Next one is Weir 29. It's allowing us to store more fresh water in the freshwater canal system. And the Nicholas Parkway West and East Water Main Improvements. That project is complete. And the Southwest Operations Building and Maintenance Shop. We anticipate scheduling a ribbon cutting next in August or September. We're right now working on some punch list items on that project. Turned out great. It's a great facility. We're really excited. Staff has already moved in to the facility and setting up shop and they're out of that trailer that they've been in for many, many years. That's all I have. Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Pearson? Thank you, sir. Appreciate the update.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the quarterly update for Public Works.
Good morning, Mayor and Council for the Record. Percy Sambrano, interim Public Works Director. So I'm gonna go very quickly through the list of 12 projects that you have on the screen. So the first one is on Trail So the first one is Sun Trail. You're very familiar with it. The segment in purple is completed in use. The one in blue is designed, we're waiting for, to be available to enter into an agreement with FDOT for the grant. That is scheduled for fiscal year 2025. So keep in mind fiscal year 2025 for FDOT starts on July of 2024. So we're gonna start working on that one early next year. This segment is already fully designed. And the segment in orange is the one, or reddish, is the one that we're currently on their negotiations. We got a scope and fee. The fee that we received from the consultant is 100,000, 140,000 above the grant. We have been predating that this Sun Trail is not goes to the city because it's a match that doesn't require, it's a grant that doesn't require a match. So we're in negoti, we're talking to FDOT to see if they can increase the grant allocation so we don't have to put money out of the city's pocket. So we'll keep you posted. Right now, we are on those conversations with FDOT. Regarding road rehabilitation program, the local paving is to start within the next couple of weeks. The major road paving should start immediately after that in, later in August. The spot paving, that one, we're working in the scope because we bundle what is needed based on utilities repairs plus those segments of roadways that have been heavily patched. So we put a scope together. So we're working on those locations. And pavement preservation, that program, we are exploring piggybacking contract from other jurisdictions. So we'll keep you posted how that goes. Alley reconstruction, this is in progress. This project is on a schedule and under budget. Medium landscaping, the Rose Garden is in progress, is on a schedule, on their budget. The Chiquita project is under construction and is behind schedule. We have some issues with irrigation that we're working with utilities. Embers, we are in the access management component of the design. We had a workshop a couple of weeks ago, and the design will follow, the design of the landscaping. And Country Club is the same situation, but behind, is following. We're doing the embers and while we're learning there, we're doing the the Country Club. Keep in mind, this is the first time we're doing this type of projects in-house. Medium landscaping, there you have pictures how Rose Garden is looking. And Chiquita. Sidewalk program, we have completed all the sidewalk that we were planning in doing, building, using our in-house crews. So all of those sidewalk segments are completed. The one that are behind is the design bill, delivery method. We haven't been successful. We put together, it took us a long time putting together the package out. We went out, we only got one bit. The cost was excessive, so we're regrouping and looking at other ways to delivering sidewalks using outside contractors. The Palmetto Pines Golf Course. So this one, we have a design, is under permitting. The, our real estate office is working with the owner of the golf course to enter into an agreement with the city. Keep in mind, this is a unique situation in which the city is funding improvement for water quality on private property. So it's a golf course, so we're gonna have to enter into an agreement with this developer. This is a partnership. This is, so it's behind schedule and under budget. BMINA Basin, the mooring fields is in procurement right now. We received one response to our RSP and is currently under evaluation. The Stormwater Operational Project, this is one of those for flood prevention. We are doing a reassessment of the stormwater system by Hancock Bridge Parkway. This one is behind schedule, is under budget. And the reason it's behind schedule is because we asked the consultant to explore more options than what they were giving us at the first time. So it took, that took more time. With our survey crews, we are out there already checking the permanent marks, markings for, that are gonna be part of North One to preserve those markers as the UEP starts construction. In addition, our survey crew, they did the D and D Marina Boundary Survey. And this is gonna assist the city on putting together all the paperwork to have those slips transferred to the Jet Club project as part of the permitting. And a massive and very important project that we're undertaking, this is three years in the making, we're working with DEP and we're changing the, updating the reference markers citywide. And this is, what you see in the picture to your right is the station that was built by the foot of the Cape Coral Bridge. This is not a dock. We're gonna fence that out and so it's not like a public area, it's just to provide access to that station there. It's a Thai gout, gout there. And that's all I have. If you have any questions?
Any questions regarding Public Works?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Welsh, I see your light on.
Yeah, I noticed just a few weeks ago, we had the curbing machine out. Was that successful, that one area that they did? And I know that we drove by after, after a meeting, but how, how was, how did that turn out and what do we?
My apologies. What was the question?
The curbing machine. I know we finally got it out and tested and is there any sort of report?
We had a pizza celebration with our crews last week because it has been challenging. And you know, our crews, they were used to do sidewalks, so we have to retrain them. So it's going well. We, it took us time to get the right mixture of the concrete because it's a different specialty. But, but it's going well. So we took, the supervisor took the crew out for a pizza celebration last week.
I'm glad it was a success because that was one of the, the things that this council, I know, put forward as one of the items that we, we pushed for so that, and we know that landscape and curbing is big for Councilmember Shepherd as well. So medians and median improvements. I'm glad that we're finally seeing the fruits of something that we put together. So, thank you.
Yeah, we learned, we learned that we have to be, we have to step up the MOT. We have this very high visibility project because it was near City Hall, so everybody was looking at it. But so far, so good. Thank you.
Yeah, Councilmember Welsh, if you go up near Culture Park Theater, that's where they were doing them all.
Yeah, no, I've drove by a couple of times. I just wanted to, to hear how, kind of how it finished up and, you know, it's nice to see things that, you know, as far as I've been on council, things that we voted for and seeing them come to fruition. It's one of the, kind of like the unspoken joys that we get, like it's something that we kind of helped push forward and seeing it happen. So, thank you.
Councilmember Stike?
Thank you. I know that we had, post Ian, we had some issues with dredging needs at some of the entry points to the canal, some of the, some of the canals themselves. And there was a minor discussion around the potential of, of maybe rebirthing our own dredging department, if you will, where we were outsourcing, have been outsourcing that. And that the last outsourcing that we had done, the contractor failed miserably evidently. And there was some thoughts around, you know, re-engaging our own dredging capabilities. Can you speak to that at all?
Yes, as part of the budget. And I don't know if the city manager wants to talk about it or...
That's okay.
Okay, so as part of the budget, we're planning to resurrect, getting our, a new dredge and new crews and have something, a flexible type of dredging, not the mega-large dredge that is so difficult to get in and out, it's only for the big, big projects. So we're looking into something that will be more flexible into the future, but that we can do in-house.
Okay, great, thank you.
But it's not funded yet, so it will be part of the budget.
Oh, I get it. I just want to make sure that if we're headed in that direction, that we're making positive steps that way. Thank you.
Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. While we're celebrating the, the curbing machine, and thank you for bringing that up, you know, we never know what, what kind of projects, but clearly that obviously was something that C-TAC and council was, was interested in. You know, we shifted the sidewalk crew to run the curbing machine crew with the, with the hopes of putting sidewalks out to the market because that, you know, it's, you know, concrete work, it's not specialized, you don't need the, the concrete curbing machine. And as the slide showed, you know, we were able to complete the amount of sidewalks that we had planned for, for city crews. But we were unsuccessful in getting the private sector to step in and pick up where we rediverted, you know, to curbing. So one of the things that we'll continue to have some discussions about as we go through the budget process is, you know, the monies that we had set aside for the private sector are still there and we have not been able to deliver the, the sidewalk, you know, to the residents. So we're reconsidering, you know, how, how to get that, that work accomplished. You know, we were, we were unsuccessful in getting bidders at a reasonable price. I mean, the price that was submitted was astronomical, so we had to turn that down. So there's, there's been some success, but on the other hand, you know, we've, we've faced some, some labor shortage and some high, high pricing, you know, to get that labor in the private sector on the sidewalk. So we, we'll have to continue to have that discussion as we move through the budget process.
Okay. Seeing no other discussions on this topic, we'll move on to number seven, Quarterly Communications Report.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Caitlin Mullin. I'm the Senior Public Information Specialist for the Office of Communications. Recently, I had someone ask our office if we'd ever considered incorporating song into the way we market our materials. So I'd like to clear the air. Yes, I am the lead singer of a band. Yes, I have performed for city events. And no, I will not be singing the Quarterly Communications Report for Quarter Three of Fiscal Year 2023.
I know, you can, you're pretty good.
Well, I thank you, I appreciate that. But today I will be presenting it in spoken voice. So with that, we will dive in. In today's presentation, we're gonna cover some of our larger scale campaigns, events and projects, some of the measurables that we use, and then the 3-1-1 topic tracker. On your screen, you'll be able to see some of our quarter three campaigns. And these are primarily for marketing and educational purposes. And they're the larger scale campaigns that we've worked on during the third quarter. One of our largest campaigns that we work on throughout the year is our fertilizer restriction messaging. This is an informational, educational campaign that explains the city's fertilizer restrictions, why they exist, and what each of us, both residents and contractors alike, can do to keep our waterways healthy. The campaign runs from June through September and includes a multifaceted approach using digital marketing, physical materials, and partnerships with our local media. So I'll give you a brief, high-level overview. That way you have an idea of some of the tools that we utilize here in communications. For our digital marketing, we use articles in our city newsletter that goes out monthly, social media posts on Facebook and Instagram, press releases on the topic, our electronic sign here just outside of City Hall, videos on CCTV, the two electric Lamar message boards that are situated on Cape Coral Parkway and Veterans Parkway, a designated webpage on the city website, and website pop-up messaging. For our physical campaign materials, we use for fertilizer specifically bus bench advertising, and that's in two locations throughout the city. On the Move, which is a printed publication mailed to both residents and businesses in the city, informational flyers and banners along several roads in Cape Coral. And then lastly, we generally partner with our media to do topic-specific stories on this campaign. One of the things we did new this year is an educational commercial. We worked with our Environmental Resources Division to prepare a 30-second spot, and we hope to get that aired on local TV networks. Another one of our large campaigns this year was Hurricane Season 2023 with our motto, "Be Prepared." This is another multifaceted campaign that began with our inaugural Hurricane Expo back in May to kick off the hurricane season. And it includes a mix of some of the digital, physical and media partnerships, including, and I'll just note a few here, the city's first ever printed hurricane guide. If you don't have a copy, we'll get some to you. They're really beautiful and our, our staff is excited to have been able to get that completed. We put a video out on how to create your own hurricane kit, participated in local media stories, and we designated a webpage on our city website that is full of information on how residents can prepare both before, during, and after a storm. One of our main focuses for this campaign was how residents can get information from the city because we all know that was a point of contention during Hurricane Ian. And I'll just touch on a few of the others. We do advertising for red, white and boom. We have our solid waste messaging that goes on year-round, rental registration, water quality and blue-green algae, and public education on the fiscal year 2024 budget. Our team is thankful to work with our amazing special events team regularly, and we provide varying levels of support to different city events. So our work for these events includes everything from the creation of graphics and logos, creating, printing and distributing posters and flyers, creating graphics and verbiage for social media posts, Facebook live streaming, recording and editing videos and reels, sending press releases on all events, and if traffic flow is affected, we send a press release out with a map so residents are informed and aware of what's going on. We also use the digital, physical, digital and physical marketing tools we discussed earlier, as well as partnerships with our local media to ensure all of the city's events are marketed well. Our communications team also works at Boothett Bike Night where we answer questions, hand out information and some cool fun city swag. And we are present at almost all events. You'll see us there either taking pictures, Melissa could be presenting, live streaming, capturing photos and video for future use. And then, of course, you've seen the events where we play a little more of a larger role like the tree lighting and any ground breakings and ribbon cutting ceremonies. This is by not all means, all of the projects we worked on over the last third quarter, but they are some of the larger ones. So to give you an understanding of how our office goes about supporting departments across the city, our work starts when we sit down and we meet with these divisions and we consider them our customer. And we simply determine their needs, their goals, their target audience. And then depending on the type of support that they need, our involvement could be anything from creating a graphic for social media to coordinating and running the entire event. So One Pro was going to have a few things to pull up. I'm just gonna pull up a couple of things. The water quality report is something that we are really excited about. Michael Dest was able to create this, and it was the first time we were able to support our utilities division with this. He designed it from the ground up, and it's something we're really excited about. He has just a, a few slides to show you here. We was able to kind of breathe some fresh life into something, and of course, we all know water quality is very important for our city. One of the other things I wanted to touch on for our list of projects was the Cape Coral Quest, and this was spearheaded by my colleague Sarah Newcomb, and this has been wildly popular with our residents. We like to call them questers. So some of the stats I want to give you are related to the signups. We've had 3,290 signups, over 5,000 check-ins, almost 350 prizes claimed. And then we've had 128 people be entered into the Weston drawing, which means they've got 20 of the 30 check-ins. And then 67 residents were able to be entered for a free pass to Sun Splash, which means they did every single check-in out there for a total of 30. And then the last product that I would like to have One Pro pull up is the fertilizer commercial that I mentioned earlier. I was able to work with Environmental Resources to put together just a quick little spot that's gonna air, and it just highlights a few of the key points of our fertilizer ordinance in a quick bite-sized way for them to understand what it's about. And if it's not coming up, that's okay. We'll just move on. Getting close to lunchtime. We continue to work with IT on the Cape Coral 3-1-1 app. We've been consistently pushing out messaging to encourage our residents to download it and use it because there's a lot of really great city information available on the app. Now on to our measurables, which we're really excited to talk... Now on to our measurables, which we're really excited to talk about. So far in fiscal year 2023, our office has sent 232 press releases, which is a lot, and 78 of those were sent just in Quarter Three alone. A lot of these media, or a lot of these press releases end up turning into media stories, which is just a testament that we are communicating better than we ever have before. Before I get into our social media measurables, I'd like to explain the difference between impressions and engagements, because they do change. So for Facebook impressions, these are the number of times any content from a page enters a person's screen. Our impressions for this fiscal year are at 5,614,475, which is up 214% from the previous year. Now engagement is any action someone takes on your Facebook page, this means they've reacted to a post, they've commented, they've shared, this also includes saves, views of a video, or clicks on a link. During the first three quarters of fiscal year 2023, we've already surpassed last year's total for engagement at 516,399. Another thing that we're proud of is that we've gained 500 organic followers in the third quarter, and our preference is to organically grow our presence on Facebook and Instagram. It may mean that we're gaining followers a little more slowly, but it means that there are genuine followers who care about our content, they're likely to interact and share it. This makes it easier for us to continue developing a strong, reputable, and sustainable brand long-term. Just to touch on Instagram really quick, in quarters one, two, and three, we're up 356% from last year with 2,776 followers, and we had 585,422 impressions. For Twitter, we are up 61% from last year with 6,434 followers, and so far, we've published 571 posts on Twitter, surpassing last year's total, which was only 499. Moving on to a quick 3-1-1 update, the 3-1-1 Call Center is housed under the Office of Communications and is made up of three full-time individuals and one part-time individual. One of the full-timers recently accepted a promotional job opportunity within the city, so we are working to hire a temporary employee in the interim until we can fill the vacant position. And for our hot topic, solid waste, primarily tote, repair, and replacement continues to be the largest volume of calls that 3-1-1 is receiving, and like I mentioned, the majority is related to repair and replacement. In the backup material for today's presentation, you'll find a 3-1-1 Topic Tracker packet. This packet includes a list of calls citywide for the third quarter, and it's broken down by each specific district, so you can see what residents in your districts care about. We've also included some examples in this packet of what the inquiries related to each topic might be. This will help give you an idea of what people are calling about on the top 15 topics that they're calling for. The information included in the packet can also be found on our website, and some instructions for how you can access that anytime, anywhere can be found on this slide. We hope that this is something that you'll find helpful and you'll continue to utilize, and that it will be beneficial for you, so if you have any questions, please feel free to reach out to our office. Before I wrap up, I want to take a quick moment to brag about our amazing team. During Quarter Three, our office was recognized with two awards from the Florida Municipal Communicators Association. Melissa Mickey, our communications manager, earned the 2022 Rising Star Award, she was one of 60 applicants throughout Florida and was chosen for the excellence she's displayed as manager of this office. Our office, the Office of Communications, was also recognized with an honorable mention for the 2022 Best Web Resource Award. This award highlighted our office's efforts during Hurricane Ian and the way we use the city's website as a central hub to provide accurate and timely information. As you can see from our presentation today, our office plays an integral role in everyday city business. The city of Cape Coral communicates with the outside world on a daily basis. We believe that a strong external communication strategy helps promote the city, it helps increase brand recognition, positively shape the public's perception of the city, and ultimately improves our community's experience. Thank you so much, if you have any questions, just let me know.
Thank you, any questions regarding the update? Seeing none, thank you very much, we appreciate it. Okay, we'll move on to Item Eight, Quarterly Economic and Business Development Office Report.
Officer. I'm going to just start with the report overview, and within our report, you'll see we'll discuss our EBDO organization, key economic indicators, our industry updates, business retention, attraction, and expansion activities, and marketing activities. I would like to start out with introducing our newest staff member. Just to give you an overview, we are strengthening our economic development team by hiring new staff, expanding our staff will enable us to better serve our existing businesses, enhance our capacity for assisting with expanding businesses, and be more proactive in attracting new businesses to our city. In order to accomplish this, we have taken on a few things and accomplished some goals for hiring, we just recently hired our new business retention recruitment specialist in June, Adriana started with us three weeks ago, and I'll be introducing her, to introduce herself to you, once we go through the other points. We did post another job opening for the same position, that closed July 7th, we will be looking to interview and conduct those interviews to hire a total of two additional recruitment specialists, and that would increase our staff to three. The idea being that we want to have more touchpoints with our businesses and be able to focus on the different aspects of our office with the retention, expansion, and attraction activities for our department. So I'm going to introduce, bring, have Adriana come up to introduce herself.
Thank you, Sharon. Mayor, Council Members, good afternoon. My name is Adriana Peterson, and as Sharon had mentioned, I am the Business Recruitment and Retention Specialist. I am three weeks today in this position, and I have hit the ground running, getting out into our community, meeting with our local businesses, answering their questions, and being a resource to them. A little bit of background information on me, I have my bachelor's degree in communications advertising, my past experience is in sales as well as marketing positions, and I'm very excited to have this opportunity to be an ambassador for the city of Cape Coral, and if there is anything that Sharon and I can help with, please feel free to reach out to us anytime, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Adriana has done a great job in her first three weeks on our staff, and I'll get into some of those activities a little later in the presentation. So let's go through our key economic indicators, and I've provided the unemployment rates for April, March, April, and May of 2023, and also comparison of where that puts us compared to May of 2022. You'll see that we are at 2.7% in line with the unemployment rate for Florida, and just a bit shorter in the number for unemployment for Lee County, so we're doing well when you look at our immediate community and the state. I've also provided vacancy rates for Southwest Florida, you can see how we're comparing with other cities. I'm not going to go through all of them, I think all of you have had an opportunity to review where we are with those rates, and I'll talk about some trends with our next few slides. And this is for our most populated Florida cities, the same data, we just spread out the number of cities that we're looking at, and looking at those that had the most population in Florida. So when you look at our vacancy and market rent per square footage, you'll see that we have a visual of a 10-year trend in terms of our vacancy and where we are with rent. The current vacancy at 1.9% for office is up 30 basis points from 12 months ago, the average rent is at $24 a square foot, and that is at four, it's been, it's up 460 points from 12 months ago. If you look at the rent growth, you'll see that rents have increased a cumulative of 25.8%, that's over the past three years, our most prominent being the spike in rent growth for our four- and five-star properties, and that was in '21 and '22. You'll see that we have a chart that shows categories of our office, and that being three-star, four- and five-star ratings, and then we'll also look at how we compare to Fort Myers based on the color codes. So market takeaways for our office segment, vacancy in the Cape Coral office, submarket is 2%, and that is an increase of 40 basis points over the past 12 months. Our space that's rated one and two-star is the most dominant subtype, with 4.4 million dollar, four, one, excuse me, 1.4 million square feet in this category. Of that, there is 1.3 million that we categorize as three-star space and 110,000 square feet of four- and five-star space. While there's nothing under construction now in the office segment, we did have about 63,000 square foot of net deliveries that were brought online in the past three years. And we'll take a look at retail and where we are with vacancies. You'll see that beginning in 2020, we had a decline in our vacancy rate for retail, we are trending lower compared to Fort Myers, which is the grayish line compared to Cape Coral, where you see the red line. Our neighborhood centers are showing a higher vacancy, with the power center being at 0% and driving that number down. For the categories, just to give you an example or understanding of what we mean by power center, neighborhood center, strip center in general, a power center is looking at a development or shopping area where there are multiple box retailers. Neighborhood centers are 30,000 to 120,000 square feet, and they typically have an anchor store that's located in that proximity. Strip centers are less than 30,000 square feet, and general is a single tenant with a general purpose, and example of that would be fast food. Here you'll see again a 10-year trend, just a visual of where our market rent has started and where we are now. Right now, we're at a current average rent of just under $20 a square foot for retail So for the market takeaways, when we're looking at retail space, Cape Coral is the second-largest retail submarket for the Fort Myers metropolitan area. We remain at a low 3% for 10 consecutive quarters, that's in large part due to absorption that's edged out new construction. Over the past year, 170,000 square feet has been delivered, and an additional 110,000 square feet is set to be delivered over the coming quarters. So if we take a look at industrial, again, we're looking at a 10-year trend here. The vacancy rate for industrial is currently at 1.5%, and that's up 80 basis points from this time last year. The rent is now averaging at $12.70 per square foot, and that's up 930 basis points from this time last year. And if we look at our construction activity for industrial, you see that our construction peaked in the fourth quarter of 2021 through the first quarter of 2023, and that is a reflection of what we've seen nationally for construction trends in industrial space. Market takeaways for industrial, logistics is our most dominant industrial subtype, we have 2.8 million square feet in this category, that's followed by 740,000 square feet of flex space and 370,000 of specialized space. I think that is somewhat a reflection of what we heard when we were talking about academic village in terms of where there is a need with warehouse space that would look at the cold storage that was discussed, and we are looking to address the development of that site to reflect what we've seen in terms of our makeup for industrial, when you look at flex space and warehouse uses. Vacancy in the Cape Coral industrial market is currently at 1.5%, and that's increased by 80 basis points since this time last year. The total inventory has expanded by 170,000 square feet over the past three years. So I'll take this time to just review some of the projects we have under construction that you've seen before. The Hatley, a multifamily project that will be delivering 444 units. City Mattress is under construction at the corner of Del Prado and Pine Island Road, and Achieva Bank is also currently under construction at the corner of Southwest Pine Island Road and Burnstall Road. We'll go through some updates on our projects that we have discussed with you in the past, and some that are, we've provided, we've gotten some more information in terms of updates. With Victory Park, the 140-acre master plan development, you'll see that, update-wise, that the developer is negotiating an LOI with a post-secondary education facility. They are currently in permitting for their site plan, and they will be at the next stage applying for their infrastructure permit. Slipaway Food Truck Park in Marina, we recently had that project, they're groundbreaking, it's a $20 million project. The proposed project consists of 10 food trucks, 30 boat slips, and 1,370 feet of pathways and boardwalks. Those who are interested in applying for the food truck application, they're able to go to the website slipaway.com, and the developer is proposing that this will be delivered in 2024. Bimini Square, just a few highlights, it's a $55 million investment, mixed-use project that includes the 25 slipboat docks, 218 premium apartments, and we will have a 500-space public parking garage, it's on a 5.6-acre site, and in talking with the developer, he is anticipating that we'll have a groundbreaking for this project in September. Mellow Mushroom, we just recently met with the owner of Gator Mikes, they will be working in bringing us a Mellow Mushroom to the adjacent site, they're anticipating a groundbreaking August of 2023. We are now working with the developer to help establish a parallel access road, we are continuing to have conversations in how we can assist with the improvements that will be needed on Pine Island Road for them. The COVID-47, this was a $103 million project that we had our groundbreaking for last year. The developer is proposing that the first phase will be complete the first quarter of next year, that will be their first 100 residential units, and they're expecting completion of this project by the end of next year. Pine Island, on Southwest Pine Island Road, we have the Cape Coral Grove Project. This is a mixed-use project that is being proposed that will include retail shops and It will include retail shops and restaurants, a boutique hotel and park space. Uh, they have uh broken this project out over three phases. They're expecting that they'll be moving forward with the first phase, which is infrastructure, in ninety days. Uh, residential, they're expecting to um have construction begin in fall of twenty twenty-three. Uh, that will include five multifamily structures and three hundred and fifty units that will be initially constructed. Phase three is the commercial and retail component. Uh, they have been diligently working with uh potential uh tenants for that space. They have twelve leases that are under negotiation and thirty letters of intent. Uh, we do not have a commencement date at this time, it's to be determined. And Island Pearl, um, we've seen some activity uh begin with that. Um, the first phase of this project will be a ten thousand square feet retail center. They have currently submitted their site plan and it's under review. And we're excited to announce that the first tenant that um that they have uh secured is a Dunkin' Donuts for that site. And the Seven Islands update, we are having monthly updates with the uh the developer's team. Uh, the group have begun discussions with DEP. And they had uh what they characterized as a very um successful meeting with their pre-application stage and talking about what they're looking to do there and looking at some water quality issues. They're in the final stages of um putting together their project conceptual. And that would uh entail the programmed uses for each of the seven islands. They are anticipating that the completion of that conceptual will have for you in the next sixty days. And just to give an overview, we have um forty new businesses that are in Cape Coral. And you'll see that it it covers a ver- a wide variety of different businesses. Um, I mentioned that um I would get into some of the things that Adriana has been doing. Uh, she really has hit the ground running and um started to work with our new businesses. Uh, we met with our um fire inspector chief and looked at how we can be an asset to our businesses and working with them. Um, as they're looking to uh finalize their steps in um having the BTRs issued. Um, Adriana is now meeting with them and letting them know what they can expect with the um fire inspection, how they can prepare for that, and also reminding them of that final step where they have to schedule those dates. Uh, so we have um looked at how we can um be of specific assistance to those who are just going through that um BTR process. And this is just a list of some of the additional new businesses that we've had come online. Marketing activities, um stakeholder engagements, print and digital ads. Um, we've had some uh publications and speaking engagements. Just to uh go over some of our activities with our stakeholders. Uh, I've been able to attend um our monthly TDC meetings that are held and um providing them with updates of of what's happening in Cape Coral. We've got very positive feedback from that. Uh, attending resiliently workshops. Um, we had um a number of workshops where I served as the speaker on on two of them. And just looking at some of the other workshops that were covering the different areas and being actively involved with that. Uh, meetings with FGCU to talk about how we can incorporate what they're doing as we're looking to market the area and attract uh businesses to our area. Uh, some of the networking events that uh I've attended, um, our Manufacturing Association um networking events, uh, working with CCCIA and uh talking to them with um different opportunities that we can work together, uh, attending our Horizon Council. And uh some of the commercial segments in the area, just making connections with um those who are looking to uh expand and talking to them about some of the benefits of Cape Coral and uh expanding into our area. I just wanted to touch on um a recent marketing campaign that we began. Uh, we did work with communications and um began a one-year marketing campaign uh where we are advertising at RSW. Uh, the ads are featured on their digital displays uh on a video wall. I had an opportunity um last time I visited home to see um what those look like. They really do give a a nice um impression of our area. And we are rotating with three different ads that you'll see um that are showcased on that visual, that digital display. We also um rolled out our Breaking Barriers to Business program. That is a grant that we're targeting now for the CRA, where we're providing grants up to fifty thousand dollars. With that particular grant, we are looking to provide assistance to some of our businesses who have a budget that they've um anticipated and worked with in terms of establishing their business or expanding their business. But then they find that there are additional expenses that have come um and were unexpected as a result of some of our requirements. And this grant is there to assist those businesses. Um, the commissioners for the CRA budgeted two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for um the project to start. Uh, we are aiming to expand this program citywide, but we'd like to just kind of um get things worked out in terms of um logistics and um how we will um execute that particular program. Um, once we have gotten a few under our belt, we are expect- expecting to come before you and propose that this is expanded citywide. Our applications will be going live for this um starting next week. And we um have hosted uh two industry business roundtables up in. Uh, we have one coming up this Friday, which will be our construction industry. Um, our first was lenders and financing. And we had um restaurants come in in June. We have gotten great feedback from our um representatives of these industries in terms of different takeaways and areas that we can um put some additional efforts forth. Uh, with our lenders and financing, we um got feedback that we are starting to see a lot of activity in the um medical field in in terms of doctor's office and dentist's office. Uh, so there's some um additional activity and investment that's happening specifically in that industry. Uh, restaurants, we had a lot of conversations with some of our uh South Cape located restaurants and talking about how we can um be more accommodating to them with uh events. And we're excited to have our meeting on Friday with construction and building and uh certainly making sure that we identify what the specific points are and things that we can do to address some of uh our industry concerns. So I have included in the packet what our calendar looks like. Uh, you'll see that we have different industries scheduled through April of twenty twenty-four. A summary of our other activities, um, we have finalized our contract with DCG Core Plan. And that is for our Economic Development Strategic Plan. We are looking to have our kickoff meeting for that um mid-August. And the timeline for that is a twelve-month period. We started what we've termed uh the New Business Navigator Program, which is um Adriana going out and talking to our new businesses and in helping to explain to them some of the um different resources that are available to them. Uh, we really looked at how we could take some of the uh components that a council member Cummings had mentioned with business in a box and how we can start to implement some of those. Uh, and so our first step is with this navigator program. Um, we're uh providing welcoming letter, welcome letters to them, uh introducing them to our departments and explaining uh what those departments are for. Uh, we also have with our existing businesses, started to share how they can prepare for um hurricane season. Um, I attended the FEDC Conference in Orlando. Uh, we created an Economic Business Development Office Incentive booklet. Again, that is an extension of uh some of the components we talked about with business in a box and trying to have those resources available for our businesses and easily accessible. So that's now on our website, uh, serving on the Resilient Lead Task Force. And um the draft request for, that should be a a request for proposals, not a request for qualifications. Uh, the draft RFP for the three hundred and fourteen acres um located on Burnstall Road was provided to procurement. Um, they are finalizing that so that we can put that out for uh interested developers. And that concludes my report. I'll open it up for any questions.
Councilmember Steinkie.
Thank you, Sharon. Just a quick question in um one of the diagnostics in there. Uh, it talked about Cape Coral being a submarket of Fort Myers. Does that mean a submarket of Lee County? Or if not a submarket of Lee County, what would another submarket of Fort Myers be?
So it is for the Fort Myers metropolitan area. And that includes Estero, Lehigh Acres, Captiva, Sanibel, Fort Myers Beach and Bonita Springs.
Okay, thank you.
Any other uh comments or questions?
Saying none, thank you for the uh update, Sharon, and and uh welcome again. And we look forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you.
All right, item five in the agenda is a roundtable discussion. Uh, any roundtable items, uh, Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, one item that I think we should discuss before um before it gets um too far down the road. Several months ago, we started to discuss um how council could better utilize uh boards and commissions. Um, that ultimately wound up with uh several of them being sunset and converted into stakeholders uh groups, which we've had several meetings with um as a stakeholder. And and they're on their way of of helping us in some targeted and focused uh items that we need help on. At one point, there was discussion about the Budget Review Committee and how they may better serve you all through the budget process. We never circled back around and uh provided that group with any type of guidance uh on how you expect them or what things you would like them to do with the proposed budget that uh I put forward. So uh they're intending on meeting um next week. We have a uh budget calendar that is out there for our meetings uh amongst administration and city council. We intend on uh having our first uh budget workshop on uh eight-eight, our second budget workshop on eight fifteen. We have a tentative third budget workshop if needed on eight twenty-two. Um, my recommendation um would be that if the Budget Review Committee um has recommendations to provide you all that they do it um during the eight fifteen uh meeting. That would allow you the opportunity to see if we need to have the eight twenty-two um budget workshop. But that, I just wanted to have a discussion about that. I I know it was an open item that we hadn't closed up. And I know there was some concern about what, you know, what the boards and commissions do. So it'd be a good time before they get started to maybe try to help, help them identify what, what you'd like them to do with us uh in the next couple of weeks. Thank you.
Yeah, I think, you know, if we have three meetings scheduled, I think it would be important to get their recommendation. You know, at least by the second meeting, I I would support that. Then that still gives us the opportunity, uh, if need be, we, we have the availability for that eight twenty-two uh meeting. And like they have in the past five and five, six years I've been here, you know, they make a recommendation, presentation uh on their recommendation as a collective body. And uh probably that, that should occur probably at least on the eight fifteen meeting. So I would uh, I would, you know, agree with that. Councilmember Hayden.
Yeah, typically over the last four years, they've um provided their recommendations that second meeting. Um, that, that's the way it's been, that, that way they, you know, they hear the presentations or discussions from the first meeting. And then they've already developed their recommendations and then provide them the second meeting. And then I think the past several years, we went to a third meeting, but not necessarily for their discussion, but because we had some things that we needed to talk about. But typically, they've always provided their input that second meeting.
Councilmember Cummings.
Thank you. Um, I kind of wrote this down. So I would like to talk about some of this misinformation that we continue to receive from the Budget Review Committee member. He has put out concerning misinformation with the city's budget. I want to address this today before we consider any recommendations from the board because it's important that the recommendations are based on facts. For example, there is no recommendation to increase the franchise fee this year. And I believe the recent comments on that reserves, excuse me. Where was I at? And I believe the recent comments on the reserves are also inaccurate. So I'd like you to verify this if you don't mind, sitting um mic. Um, and one more thing, the city council needs to be able to trust the information we are receiving from the BRC. And I don't think we should continue to allow a board member appointed by this body to continue to share misinformation with our commute, with our community. So these are my concerns that I have. Um, could, could you guys help me verify some of this information that we've received and, and help me back it up?
Mark, are you aware of information that the council has received?
Uh, yes, I understand that there was an email that went to you all. I, I don't know, a couple of days ago or something like that. So I think there was some information in there that wasn't, it was not correct uh with regard to recommending an increase of the franchise fee. We have not um yet recommended it. We provided you information about the fact that it's available to you if you so choose to do so and what it would mean to you if you did so. Uh, at the same time, there was a discussion in here about uh utility rates increasing eighteen percent. That's not accurate. Uh, the, there's a five percent increase that uh the city council has voted on. That goes into effect on October one. The fact that the rate that the overall revenues may be coming in higher than five percent is more of a reflection of new accounts being added to the system as opposed to anything else. Uh, the uh increase in the general fund reserves uh or sixty-five percent, that would not be accurate either. Uh, the ci- the city council is uh has agreed to a two, two point five percent this year, two point six percent next year of the total general fund revenues. And we calculate that when we finalize out the budget, tell you exactly what that number is. You've already set aside the two point five percent as a budget reserve, uh, the, that's already existing. And uh, you know, we may end up having to use a little bit of that this year to, you know, carry us through from, from the recovery of Hurricane Ian. But we'll receive much of it back, uh, if not all of it, uh, with respect to our, uh, you know, returns from uh both the, the state and the federal government from FEMA. So uh, those are just some of the things that I would say to you that, you know, were not accurate in the information that was provided to you.
So that is my question. It's when we're getting this information handed to us, and this is our Budget Review Committee that we're counting on. How can this, I mean, if, if this is going even out publicly, this doesn't make us look good as a whole up here. So, so this is my question. How do we correct this problem? Because this is a pretty big problem.
I think, are you directing that question to council or are you directing that question to?
To, to everyone. I mean, I mean, I don't know how you guys feel about it, but when you see these, don't you go back and re-ask questions and say, is this true? Can you show me why, why the data is so far off? I mean, now, if it's confusing some of us up here, what is it doing to the public? And it doesn't make us look good if people are questioning the numbers.
Well, I mean, I think uh for me personally, um, usually, you know, the information that he puts out uh is usually inaccurate. We've seen that over the years, uh, the last couple of years. And typically manipulates the numbers uh for a certain agenda he, he may have. Now, for me personally, I don't personally even hardly look at his emails. Uh, because I know they're usually not accurate. The only thing that concerns me is if that information is disseminated out into the public and they only hear one side of the story. So that, that could concern me. Um, or if I do have a question uh or something that he may bring up. As we all do, we have the opportunity to reach out to Mr. Mason to uh clarify that information and make sure it's accurate. Um, and that, that, I guess that's our responsibility to do that. But for me personally, it's more so that the information is put out into the community and it, it's inaccurate, so. So, you know, that's a discussion we can have. I will say, in all fairness, most of the time, the email that he writes is as a resident of the community and not a chair of the Budget Review Committee. So he has that opportunity, whether we like it or not, to write us as a constituent. Doesn't mean we have to read it, but he does have that right as a constituent to write city council. Now, if he's disseminating that information out into the public, that's inaccurate to me. That rises to another different threshold that we may want to address. But, so that's my position on it. I see a couple of lights on. I'm assuming it's about this topic. So if you'd like, I could open the floor up to see.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Cosin.
Thank you, Mayor. On that topic, the gentleman that we're talking about often speaks to us. And he's often wrong, all right? So we all agree on that. But if I remember correctly, and I pulled up the email, and he didn't say, I represent the Budget Committee. He said, he didn't say anything. He just sent us his thoughts, which to me is anyone's right, whether they're on a committee or not. And I don't want to take away that right just because he's on that committee. I haven't seen him, as the Budget Review Chair, send us anything inappropriate. But if I'm wrong, I'm happy to be corrected. So I don't think any action needs to be taken. We always see information, we always see misinformation up here. And it's worse around election time. So that's something we have to look forward to. Thank you.
Councilmember Welsh.
Yeah, I was just going to bring up, just as Councilwoman Cosin said, this came as a resident, not as the Budget Chair. But one thing that we can do as a council is we vote to put these people on the board. So if you have an issue with one of the board members, when it comes time to vote, to reelect them for that position, I would say at that time is when you would bring this up and vote to not have them sit on that, on that board again. So if that's really what the problem is. But as far as, like I said, the email coming to us, I don't think it's being put out to the public. I don't think it's causing any more harm than I think some of the other emails we're getting about any other hot topic, whether it be Redfish Point or the budget or anything like that, the hot club. So that's all. Thank you.
Councilmember Steenke.
I could be wrong. But a citizen, while a citizen has the right to share any thoughts, comments, and we encourage them to, when someone assumes a role within the city, then, to some degree, they're held to a higher standard, if you will, around what the potential effects of comments would be, what the potential effects of erroneous information would be. And so while citizens certainly can say what they want, share what they want, write to the breeze, they're considered citizens amongst themselves. But as soon as someone that serves in a capacity for the city, there comes with that a bit of a representation of the city along with it. And so while a concern of a committee member around any topic or any mathematical equation should come to us as a council, that's where it should stop until it's determined whether or not that information truly is accurate or inaccurate. And so I, it's not stated in a way where it's, you know, I might be wrong or is this accurate? It's presented as this is the fact. And then that fact is presented as fact in a variety of venues. I don't think that's appropriate for someone that's supposed to be working in coordination with council in serving the city, that this is, this is a team effort. And anything that is done that is false information is detrimental to that effort. So in my opinion, I believe a letter from council should be supplied and delivered to the Chair of the BRC that indicates that that is true. That when you're serving the capacity that you are, that there's an obligation to make sure that information that gets shared is accurate before it's shared. If there's any question as to what has been presented, in this case, in the budget, and if there is an error or if there is an observation that is inaccurate, it should be corrected before it's made public knowledge. Thank you.
Councilmember Hayden.
Yeah, here's the thing. For the last couple of years, as he's been a member of this committee, Budget Review Committee, he has shared inaccurate information. And each time, Mr. Mason has corrected him. And each time, the other members of the Budget Review Committee understood what was the accurate information and what wasn't. So when they make recommendations, they do it as a committee, just as we do in our decisions as a council. And a lot of the times when he shared information, that information wasn't what the Budget Committee considered fact. They considered what Mr. Mason was sharing, as they should, what was the fact. And they made their recommendations based on that, as they did last year when they were split on recommending a drop in the millage or keeping it the same. So as was stated, he was doing this as a citizen. So if we write a letter, it's going to be, have to be directed that way. In terms of his role as Budget Review Chair, you know, he's entitled to say what he wants. We hope it's the right information. Many times, it's not. He is corrected at those meetings so that the wrong information isn't being shared and the wrong recommendation being made because of that information. So I think as a committee that we allow them to move forward with whatever decisions they make and whatever recommendations they make to us. I really don't think that one person is going to be able to control that group. They're well-educated. They're informed. And never, ever in the past, has one person ever dictated what recommendations they were going to meet. You're the liaison to that group, obviously. So you'll start to hear those discussions on, what, Monday? It's Monday, their next meeting. I don't know how effective a letter to a private citizen is going to be because they haven't started their budget review discussions yet because they just got the book. You know, I think if he continues on the same path that he's been on the last several years, Mr. Mason can continue to correct him, you can continue to correct him, as I did the last few years. But I think, let the process unfold. Let's see what happens. He sends these emails every week, and most of the time, there's misinformation shared with them. I don't believe his reach is big enough that he's influencing our community or us. So I'm not really sure the effectiveness of a letter at this point until we see where this, where this process goes with them and how he lays out his plan for this group coming Monday, heading into our workshops. Thanks, Mayor.
Councilmember Shepherd.
Yeah, ditto to Councilman Hayden and Steenke. That's the problem. The problem is the title he gets, the public assumes that everything he reports is factual. That's the big difference. So how we handle that, I don't know. But it does, it is sad that it happens because people look, the public looks at the people that are in that group as knowing all the factual information because of the meetings they attend and the knowledge that they're given. So that's the problem. So I agree. I don't want to repeat what everyone said. Thank you.
Councilmember Cosin.
Thank you. Just real quick, I want to say, I don't think that this person is purposely spreading misinformation. I think he just doesn't have all the information, and he thinks that he does. And that's when this gets out of hand. I don't think he's doing it on purpose. And I want to ask, because I think someone said, he's disseminating this into the public. So how is that happening? I forget who said that. I thought he was just sending us these emails. I don't know, I haven't seen him, like, go out into the public and announce that we're misspending. Well, he did that when he was a candidate, but, anyone who can answer that question? Thank you.
Councilmember Steenke.
I wasn't recommending that we send a letter to a citizen. I was recommending that we send a letter to the Chair of the Budget Review Committee that we appoint to, to be counsel to us, if you will. So my recommendation was to make something clear to the Chair of a committee that we expect to help us. And so I see that as something a little different. And it was stated that we've never done anything with the decision to maintain the BRC and change its parameters. We have, in the actual BRC meeting as liaison, I have shared with them the concerns with the current ordinance and what to expect in changes to that ordinance moving forward to further clarify their role and their relationship with council and their obligations through the course of the budget process and the budget process only. And so that was my recommendation. So I didn't want there to be any miscommunication that I thought we should send a citizen a letter around what they say or they don't say, because a citizen can say anything they want about anything. But the Chair of our Budget Review Committee should understand there's a little bit of a difference in how that communication should be made. And Councilmember Cosin, I don't know how it gets disseminated to the public, but it does. And the next thing you know, you see it in the Breeze newspaper, stated as fact.
You done?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, the only thing I, you know, just want to point out too as well, these individuals are appointed by this council to these particular boards, whether it's Budget Review or whatever board we may have out there. And, you know, we have the availability as well. I know I'd heard, one of the councilmembers, I don't know if it's Councilmember Welsh, had said that, hey, next election, just, you know, don't vote for that individual. Well, I just, just like we've done before on other issues with a particular board member, we've removed people from the board. So that availability is there. You don't have to wait for an election. If a majority of council feels, for whatever reason, that this particular individual shouldn't be on that board, that the board that reports to us, the council, it doesn't report to staff, that board is here, just like every other board, is here for recommendations to the city council. So if we feel that any individual, no matter who it is, isn't productive or may not be the best fit, then we have that opportunity as a collective body to remove any member from any board at any given time. Councilmember Cummings.
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask you. But as far as what Councilwoman Cosin said, yes, it is out there publicly. I had someone approach me at one of our clubs that I attend. It was over, don't quote me on the dollar amount, but the claim was a couple hundred million dollars was missing. That's pretty big. I mean, and I came back, and of course, I asked some questions. And they assured me and showed me where that inaccuracy was at. That's pretty big. I mean, you're not saying a couple million. You're saying, if I'm not correct, was it two-hundred million dollars, Mike? Was it two-hundred million dollars that was missing or three-hundred million?
I'm sorry, Brian and I were discussing the parameters of the board. Repeat what you were asking.
Just the accusations of the misinformation of big amounts of money that has been missing. And I was letting Councilwoman Cosin know that it did come to my attention in one of the clubs and did ask me if this was true. I think it was like a couple hundred million dollars. And I came to you and we talked about it, and you showed me where the mess-up was. And I guess my point is, that's big. You know, we don't want problems in our finance department. We don't want fingers pointed at Mark or anybody else. And I guess my point is, is when the public is coming, like you stated to me a month ago, we'll go sit in the meetings. Why would I want to go sit in a meeting and learn by somebody that's giving out misinformation? That's not what we're here for. I mean, sure, we mess up, but then we'll help each other and say, no, that's not how it went. It went like this. But when you have someone leading a committee and putting numbers out like this and putting numbers out to the community, it's a problem. It really, truly is. And let me ask you, if you don't mind, or even Mark or Mike, whoever wants to help me, that dollar amount, I believe, came in an email too, correct?
I think if you're referencing the two-hundred-and-eighty million, I think he did it in a public meeting.
Yes.
What?
That's a pretty big accusation, just saying.
Your light was on next.
My prompt of this discussion was, when we started down this path, council had began to discuss how to better utilize the boards. I understand and appreciate where it's gone. My initial request is, in the Budget Review Committee resolution, it specifically says there's like three or four items that they're supposed to do and then anything else that council would like them to do. I'm going to have a lot of staff that's going to be trying to get information that you all are asking for. As always will happen during a budget process, there'll be questions, there'll be alternatives. And so I want to be mindful of their time. The Budget Review Committee is likely going to generate issues as well. But if they're outside of the scope of the committee, then, you know, at some point, I have to tell them, you know, this is what you've been asked. If council doesn't ask for anything more, I'm not inclined to continue, based on where we've been the last several months with boards and commissions. So that, let me just make it very clear why I'm asking. If there's anything else you all want the board to do, it would be good for me to know so I can advise staff, this is something that council tasked them to research.
Yeah, I guess for me, that topic is fairly clear in the ordinance. And wherever that box is, that's the box they work within, unless this council gives the board collectively, the Budget Review Board collectively, different direction. I don't think they've ever gotten different directions since I've been here the last five years. So to me, the parameters are built within that box. And if they are asking for information that's outside that box, then I think if they're asking that information from staff, it's your responsibility, Mr. City Manager, to let them know they're out of bounds and they're outside that box. Here's what your four items are, capital improvement projects or whatever. There was three or four items.
It's going to be different than the way they've operated in the past because as we've all discussed in previous meetings, the boards have kind of went down their own roads and done kind of the things they've wanted. So this is, this is why I feel it's important that we have this discussion because that is the intent that administration, based on is the intent that administration, based on what we've discussed, we will be looking at, okay, is, is this part of their, their duties?
Yeah. And I think if that is going to be the box that they're going to work in, we're not going to give them any further direction, then, then I think on day one, Monday morning, they should hear from you, here's the box we're working in. This is what the ordinance says, this is, council hasn't given us any other direction. This is where you work. And anything outside of that is out of bounds unless this council collectively wants any other items added to their box. To me, it's pretty simple. So, with that, I'll leave, I'll open it up for any other discussion. Councilmember Stanky.
Yes, I, I need an assist on Monday. When that schedule is put together for review, it was in disregard for my calendar. I can be there Tuesday, and I will be there Tuesday, but I can't be there Monday morning. So, if, if a member of council would like to be there, or if our interim city manager is, is willing to take that role, then, then that would be great. But if there's, I want to be as my colleagues, sub in for me Monday morning, I can't be there until Tuesday morning.
What's it, at nine o'clock?
Yes.
I, I can be there. But I think that's what we, yeah, I, I think you got to set the ground rules from day one. That's probably going to save you, staff, and everyone else involved. You know, a lot of problems or time later.
It, it's a, it's a delicate interaction. They, they report to you all, but the resolution that you all set provides my staff and I guidance as to what, what they'll be looking at. So, but there is, there is a thing at the bottom that, that allows council to provide additional guidance if there's something outside of that routine, if there's something nuanced that you wanted reviewed, or, so that's kind of the, was the thought of.
So, the question, it sounds like the question is, does council have a desire for the Budget Review Committee to work on any other items than what is specified in the ordinance? You get your answer? Thank you. Councilmember Hayden.
No, just to clarify, the last couple of years that they've been through this, their role was defined and what they can do and what, and what they couldn't do. And in the last couple of years, if you looked at their recommendations, nothing out, nothing in those recommendations was outside of any sort of a box that was set. So, I'm not, you know, based on what was discussed previously, I'm trying to recall a time, maybe early on in the early discussions, before they got into budget, they might have talked about some things that were not in their purview, and I would let them know that, as would other people. But I think most of the people on that board have been through this cycle at least once, some many times. So, I think they understand what their role is. There was a time when they got off track, when they were recommending audits and different things like that, but they were corrected. So, you know, defining their role and whatever their mission is, I think most of them are up, up to speed on that, if you want to remind them on that. But I can't recall a single time in the last couple of years during the budget talks when they were escaping what their, what their role would be. Does that mean there wasn't misinformation shared? Yes, there was. It was corrected, and they based that, whatever recommendation they made on the correct information. Thanks.
Councilmember Law.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, I, I just kind of wanted to point out the irony here and the fact that we just had discussions about many of our boards and committees here and abolishing those boards and committees, or committees, for creating more problems than solutions. And this one, for one reason or another, did not make that cut, and yet here we are, wasting the equivalent of so far 30 minutes on a problem that's been presented by the, the board rather than a, a solution. The other irony that's not lost on me is the fact that some of the members that voted against abolishing this particular board have openly stated up here that they're aware that the Chairman of that board has notoriously presented misleading and inaccurate facts. So, those two things, I don't know how they can coexist, but they do, and I just want to make it aware that, that to me, it seems like we made the wrong decision collectively as a body to continue forward with this, and this is going to continue to be a distraction, this being the Budget Review Committee, as we move forward with what is, without a doubt, the most important thing that we do as a council moving forward. That being said, I'm hopeful that one of the newer members of this council that voted against that had not had the opportunity that some of the other ones here have had to, to witness this inaction, so to speak, and that individual is, is going to be keenly aware of, of that process as we move forward, and maybe their decision will change moving forward. That's all. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I agree. I still stand by my decision that I made when we, when we voted. You know, I know that we were five-three at first, and then it went to a four-to-four vote, and it didn't pass, but to me, I think there's a better mechanism for us as a council. To me, it's, just like I said in that meeting and some of those discussions we had, to me, instead of directing all this time and energy and effort on a private board, that type of energy and information should be disseminated to the eight of us who were elected, who are tasked with making the decisions when it comes to our budget. Not saying they, just like the other 200,000 residents, can't contribute to the conversation, but, you know, it is kind of ironic that we find ourselves having this discussion when we, we may have had a solution back a month or two ago. But we, we do everything as a collective body. The collective body did not want to disband it at that time. Doesn't mean that can't come forward again. That can come forward at any time. But, you know, the old, the old story, we, we, we have a process here, and we make decisions collectively. We, we, we live on the sword, we die on the sword, so, and it was a four-to-four vote last time. Not saying we can't have a discussion in the future to, to revisit that topic. But we, you know, will move forward. I think most importantly is to make sure that the community gets, gets the most accurate and up-to-date information. To me, that's, that's the priority. So, that's where I'm at. Councilmember Hayden.
Yeah, I think we created our own energy on this one. The original question from the city manager was simply on, are we moving forward with the same process that we've done before? And when would the Budget Review Committee talk, which is on the second meeting? That was the original discussion. That was the only discussion we needed to have today about this. You know, we created this one ourselves. Thanks, Mayor.
Yeah, I think Councilmember Cummings is the one who brought the topic, and that's why we're, and, and, you know, that's, that's why we're here, because she had a question, and I guess that led into this discussion. Councilmember Cummings.
Well, yeah, that's the reason why we brought it up, because it's like every week or every other week, there's constant misinformation on numbers. I mean, this isn't like a few times of, "Oops, this is an ongoing issue." Since I've been here, it's been continuously, since I, I've been here, and that's in, in November. And then I know it's probably was happening prior, because I do know, I was hearing a lot of it over the summer, constantly saying stuff, and then I would ask questions, like, "Is this true? Is, is this really happening in the finance department?" So, it's obviously been happening for a long, long time.
My only regret.
So, so this is why I brought it up, is because we can talk as a whole and, and, and have a discussion. So, that's why I brought it up, because it was already on the topic of the budget, so therefore, I went ahead and opened up the discussion.
And you have the opportunity or availability at any voting meeting, you know, to make a motion of whatever direction that, that you want to go in, and if you get a second, we'll have that discussion. So, you, you have that available to you during a voting meeting. So, that would be my recommendation, if there's a direction that you feel you want to go in, bring it up at our council meeting. All right. Any other roundtable items? Mr. City Manager, you got anything else?
I do not. Thank you.
All right. Seeing none, time and place, a future meeting. We have a regular meeting of the Cape Coral City Council is scheduled for Wednesday, July 26, 2023, beginning at 4:30 PM. Do I have a motion to adjourn? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.